Okay, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on May 28, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on May 23, 2025, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order number 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, transmitted, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Olson? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein? Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Dobkin?
Here.
Chairman Owen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three resolutions this evening. All were in your packet and are on the website. The first is case number Z24-484, 53 to 60 William Street. It's the trustees of Princeton University. It's, excuse me, block 47.02, lot 36, in the R4 zone. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the resolution? If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I just want correction. As you indicated, it's William, and that's what should be throughout the resolution, not Williams, but William.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move approval.
We have a second?
It was just an extension.
Yeah. We have a second? Okay, well, I'll second it. Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dobkin?
You're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our second case is case number Z25-611, 141 Dodds Lane, block 40, 4603, lot 22, in the R4 T-zone. Again, the resolution was in your packets. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move this.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dobkin?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our third and last resolution is case number Z25-607, 28 to 30 Humbard Street, block 25.01, lot 61, in the R4B zone. Once again, resolutions in your packets, questions, comments, or motions.
Board members, although our agenda described the applicant as Brookholmes LLC, in fact, it should be 28-30, initial L, Brookholmes LLC, because apparently they created a special entity just to own this unit. So that's the clarification I would suggest.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Claudia?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Dobkin?
Yes.
Chairman Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two applications this evening. Was previously presented. All right, so the first application is Z24-524, 353 Cherry Hill Road, block 4001, lot 10, in the R2T-zone. So who's representing the applicant this evening?
So we are here, both of the applicants, myself, Mauricio Clemente and Elvira, my wife, and we have Marina, which is our architect.
Okay.
Does the board want to hear from Derek first? Because he has a revised memo.
Yes, please.
Derek will swear you in. Do you swear or confirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Good evening. As you recall, the applicant appeared before this board on March 19, 2025, and requested a variance pursuant to NJ SA 40:55 D-70D1. A D1 use variance to permit two principal dwellings on a lot. The applicant had proposed converting the detached two-story, one-car garage structure located behind the principal dwelling to a second principal dwelling. Section 10B 255A, which addresses permitted residential uses, restricts the use of residential lots to one single-family dwelling. Accessory dwelling units are a permitted accessory use. The board had concerns regarding the size of the second dwelling and the granting of the D1 variance. The meeting was carried to allow the applicant to explore options to eliminate the D1 use variance. The applicant has taken advantage of some exceptions from FAR that are afforded to ADUs without basements, specifically a 48-square-foot exemption for a bike storage area that's accessible from the exterior, a 100-square-foot exemption for storage space for mechanical equipment and/or utilities, including washing dryers. And a definition also allows an exemption of up to 200 square foot for covered porches. Applicant has revised the first-floor design and incorporated a 48-square-foot exterior storage area, 100-square-foot utility laundry area, and 105-square-foot covered porch, reducing the FAR of the structure to 798 square feet, which is under the maximum FAR permitted for ADUs. Structure is now classified as an ADU, and the D1 variance to permit two principal dwellings on the site is no longer applicable. There are still two C variances. There's a side yard setback requirement of 15. The proposed setback is 8.2 feet, and the height-to-setback ratio is 1 to 1.5, and the proposal is 1 to 2. The applicant's requested consideration under the C1 criteria. That's an overview of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
I have a question. I wasn't at the meeting, but I listened to the video yesterday, and in the video, it was said that the square footage of an ADU was limited to either 800 or 25% of the area of the home.
Which is greater?
Oh, whichever's greater. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
No, good question.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Mr. Berger, please continue your presentation.
Ms. Rubina, I'm not sure if both your clients were at the March 19 meeting. So, and I'm sure you'll be providing testimony, so we will just swear you all in again. Do you all swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do. And Maurizio and Elvira, would you guys like to raise your right hand as per Karen's instructions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we were all on the phone, but Maurizio was without video, so he wasn't able to provide testimony. Great. Is that okay to share screen and continue with the presentation?
Yes.
Let's see if I can make this work. Yay. All right, well, we really appreciate the continuation of this hearing, and thank you, Derek, for an excellent overview. Not much to add. Following our previous meeting, we worked on the brilliant idea that was sparked by the hearing, where we were working really hard to try to modify the second floor, but the idea was we actually could modify the first floor and make the structure an ADU, which is what it really is, an accessory structure in the backyard. So luckily, thank goodness, we made it work. So as we reviewed last time, we, in order to make this a conforming application, there are multiple ways of doing this is, one is to demolish the entire structure, which is not exactly feasible. The other would be to remove the second floor, which was not working, because at that point, the whole structure would be kind of gone. A third option would be to make the house larger, to the very excellent point of Mr. Dobkin, that if the house was larger, the ADU could be larger. But what we actually came up with is, again, following your brilliant suggestion of reducing the size of the ground floor and making a portion of the ground floor exterior space and a porch allowed us to make this fit the requirements of the ADU. So we're very happy to present you this structure as an ADU, which it really is. So we will briefly explain what it is that we did. So instead of keeping the existing rear porch, we would remove the roof and keep just the ground floor patio. And then we would also remove doors and windows and a portion of this corner of the existing building and convert it to an outdoor space, so make openings, and it would be a covered entrance porch. And also, we're making use of the allowable storage, what do we call them, spaces that ADUs could utilize. One would be kind of a shed that's incorporated into the building for storage of bicycles, and the other one is a utility slash laundry room, which works beautifully. So from the exterior, basically, the building remains mostly intact with a portion of it carved out for an exterior porch, and the rear porch gets removed in this proposal. And then upstairs, almost no changes. So as you can see, the existing floor is basically an open room. The only change there is the addition of interior stair. And what that allows us to do is now we meet all the ADU requirements. And the only problem, as Derek described, that we have is where the building exists, where it sits on the property, it's still, we don't move the building. The building is still eight feet away from the property line, just like it was, and therefore, it does not meet the current setback requirement for an ADU, because it was created prior to the zoning being created. Hopefully, I'm describing that clearly. So to go back to relationship to the master plan, it mentions that it's a really good idea, and it's encouraged in the municipality to utilize existing structures and make the best use and adaptive reuse, which is exactly what we're doing. In our land use recommendations, accessory dwelling units are very much encouraged. And our master plan suggests that it would be a really good idea to accommodate buildings that predate zoning so that they could be brought to use in our contemporary life, even though they predate zoning. So we would briefly like to show and explain how we're doing this. So we really believe that adaptive reuse of this existing building with only minor alteration will achieve similar results as if we were to demolish this building entirely and build a new one, which would be allowed and require no variances. However, we believe that this configuration has a positive environmental impact of reducing landfill and saving embodied energy that is utilized in the materials. And you can see right here what we're proposing to do. So there would be, the existing porch in the back would be removed, and this door and window would be removed, and similarly on the side, it would be an open entry into the existing building. We also believe that this construction, being so much smaller than creating a building from scratch, would reduce noise and nuisance and inevitably bother the adjacent neighbors. And we believe that bringing this structure to life and improving it is actually a great thing to do for the general neighborhood. On the next slide, we really believe that we can't think of any negative impacts, but this demonstrates the variances that we're asking for. So as you can see, the existing building is located approximately eight foot two inches from the side yard, and the required is 15. It's a concrete block building. It's not something that's easily movable, so it is where it is. And because it is, uh, my goodness, so because it's two-story, it doesn't meet the height-to-setback. But it's, again, it's an existing condition. It's not something that we're creating. So we believe that there's no negative impact, the ADUs are allowed, there's no increased density over what would be normally allowed. We also believe that removing the back porch and converting part of the interior space to an entry porch has no negative impact on surrounding properties. I think that may be the last slide, but if anybody has any questions, comments, we'd be happy to try to clarify or answer. But again, we thought that was a brilliant idea, the conversation that we had here last time, that really sparked the solution.
Ms. Rubina, do you want to make this exhibit A2?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we continue the slide numbers from previous time. I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful, but...
It's basically, it's your supplemental slides now to show your...
The updated design, yes. Thank you so much, yeah. So I'm happy to stop sharing so people could see each other, and if we could help clarify or answer any questions, we'd be happy to do that.
Board members, any questions of the applicant or the architect?
I have a couple. One, what's the definition of an ADU?
It's an accessory dwelling unit. It can be comprised of three habitable rooms, 800 square feet or 25% floor area ratio of the principal dwelling, whichever's greater. There's varying setbacks based on the height of it. I could read the definition, but it's...
Oh, that's okay. You use the word dwelling, though, and this doesn't have a bedroom or a dining room. And I'm wondering, does that qualify as a dwelling? And what is the usage? What is the planned usage of this?
I would defer to the applicant for that. From a zoning point of view, if you have a kitchen and a full bathroom, that enables you to stay in that building, and you have a room on the second floor, which is labeled a playroom. I'm assuming that can be a room for someone to sleep in, so I think it meets the intent of an accessory dwelling unit.
I'd like to ask the applicant, what is the intent?
So we have three kids, and we have three rooms in the main house. And kids are growing, okay? One is 11, one is almost nine, and one is six. And we have only one guest room, and all the three kids are living in the same room, while we're living in the master bedroom. And we have a regular friend and our mother-in-law coming, my mother-in-law coming. And we are planning to give the main guest room to my elder kid next year. And we want to use this really as a guest house. So today is used like a playground on the top. There is already a bathroom, by the way. And the building was built 50 years ago, so we are not modifying the existing building, which has been occupying the land for the last 50 years. We're just using it for kind of a standing the current house and having one mother-in-law or my brothers are coming, sleeping there, and having a bathroom where they can have a shower and have a breakfast in the morning. That's it. That's what we want to do.
Good. Thank you very much.
Other questions, board members?
Yeah, I was more for completers. Do you have a slide that shows your lot relative to other lots? And this accessory dwelling unit relative to other structures? You know, the one to the south and the one to the north? Do you have anything that puts it in context to the...
So if you look at the border line, there is a four acres property. There is no building close to the border on the left side. So the, on what we consider east side, there is no building around. The closest building probably is our garage. We have another garage close to that building. And the closest building to that one is on the west side, is our neighbor, but is, I think is more than one feet on the other side. So there is no really close building to this one.
Well, once again, I ask, this is something that the board, if you have something that the board, I appreciate your description and...
We do have the map. I don't know if it's in the act, but we can clearly, I think, Derek, you have the map, and Marina, I don't know if we have the map. Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. Yeah, so we in the packet submitted a site plan and also a Google Map view, which is a little hard to zoom in, so I just pulled up the same thing live on Google Maps, so you could see the view. So this is the house right here. This is the existing structure right here. And as Maurizio was explaining, there's a large empty property that has no existing home right now. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's the one that you were describing, right here. There are no homes on this one. And there is an existing home right here, down approximately south. And then this is in the rear, so the property line is, you know, kind of about right here. And then this is the existing building, which is fronting on Montedale. So this property, the one where the side yard is closest, the one that's supposed to be 15, but it's eight currently, that's the one that's empty.
Right.
Ms. Rubina, did you say this was part of your application?
It is part of the application, but it is a little bit hard to zoom in on that one. Yeah. It is on page S2, yes.
I think there were some things that we'd never, we didn't get, you might have submitted them, but it wasn't distributed to us, if I'm remembering correctly. And I think what you're referring to, including this, we we didn't get it the second time either.
Oh, I apologize. Let me pull that, what our submittal is right here.
I think that's what you had up last time, right?
Right, so there...
Have that. I don't think.
Well, we did submit it. Hopefully, you didn't get...
Yeah, that one we, that one we do have, but it's hard to tell where your property is.
So right here, you could see, oh, I'm not zooming correctly.
Yeah.
You can see this red, this red funny shape, don't want to call it triangle, parallelogram?
Yes.
And this property is the one that has no, no structure. And then this is the house on Montedale in the back. So we're going to scooch over here, so you can see this is the one that is empty, as Maurizio was describing. And then that's the house on Montedale.
Right.
And I was using the live version to zoom in a little bit better, but you can, I think it's working with the zoom not too bad.
Do you happen to have a survey that shows the adjacent properties?
The survey that we have is, I don't think it has the adjacent properties. It just has the existing property. So we have an original survey from when these owners purchased the property. Let me stop sharing and pull that up. Hold on one second. We have it right here, that you could see right here. That, that's the guy right here.
Yep.
And that's that porch that has a roof that we'll be taking down.
Be in terms of perspective, you can see where our main house is. That's probably the closest building to that property. Our neighbor on the west side, which is Jerry, you don't see the house on the bottom of the chart. His house is almost the same distance as our house.
Approximately right here, right?
Yeah, exactly. Approximately, yeah, close to the street. And the other neighbors are really on the other side of the land, so very far.
Yeah, and you can see this one says right here, a little hard to see, 8.2. That's the existing distance from the property line.
Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Rubina, could you make sure that the board secretary gets a copy of exhibit A2, the one that you just presented tonight?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? I have a question. Is it your intent to build this as you're showing it? I mean, you have a very tight first floor, a bathroom that's, I'm not even sure it's workable, and a very small kitchen cut off by the stair, and then a completely open second floor. Is that, is that the intent of what you, is that what you're going to build?
Well, we don't need more than that. We have a kitchen in the main house. This is really like a guest room. So it's a space where kids are playing in winter. There is a sofa bed where somebody can sleep when he's coming. And we just need, you see, the kitchen's very small. It's just prepare breakfast and a bathroom for, you know, simple, I mean, as is today, the only thing we want to add is a shower. So in the morning, you don't need to come to the main house. You can have some privacy, and that's it. It's not a, it's not a big construction, to be honest.
It's a very, very small tower, very small. Okay, so the second floor will be opened. Just one big room.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's like a studio. We don't need more than that, honestly. It's it.
Okay. Okay, that was my question. Board members, any other questions? All right, so if there are no more questions, do you want to say, we're going to open this up to the public, see if there's anyone who wants to speak on behalf of this application. But you want to say anything before we do that? Sum up what you said or anything?
We'll be happy to summarize after, if that's possible. But I think pretty much, unless there are any questions, we feel that we took the board's suggestions, and we thought there were sparked really good ideas. And we're so excited that it made it into the ADU requirements. And here, it could be what it really wants to be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to open the meeting up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated that they want to speak on their behalf, on this application?
There are no hands, but if you want to let them know that they...
There are no hands, but if you wanna let them know that they have to raise their hand.
Yeah, if there is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on behalf of this application, indicate that by. Pressing the raise hands button in the center of your screen at the bottom. And then we'll recognize you and you may speak. We'll give him a second here. Okay.
There are no hands.
No hands, so we'll close the public hearing. Um and. We'll go into executive session, but before we do that, the applicant or the architect can make a closing argument.
Um I I will attempt and then Maritza, if you. Are gonna help me out, I think again, we're uh we were grateful for the suggestions, we're really thrilled that. Um this project now meets the ADU requirement and no D variance needed. The only variances that this project is asking for are due to the existing location of the structure that predates the zoning variances. We believe that um there are no negatives. Um the project is reducing the existing building, bringing it up to the twenty-first century standards, and we also believe that. In our master plan, ADUs are very much encouraged, adaptive reuse is very much encouraged. And legacy buildings that have predated um zoning. Are encouraged to continue their use, and I think this is exactly what we're proposing. Um on a personal note, for these homeowners with a very small home and um. This provides a wonderful opportunity for their family to enjoy and get the best use of their property and visiting family, so. Uh we're grateful for the consideration. Did I explain everything that you guys feel is true?
Yeah, absolutely, Maria, it for us was honestly a very simple project, and now we understand with all the rules. It became a little bit complex, but at the end, the intent was very basic, you know, use the space we have, do not expand any. Externally, any structure, just leverage the property we have, this was the intent. And now we understand we need to comply with the law and I believe we have done that. So we uh. Uh we truly believe there is no uh external impact and there is a huge benefit for us. For our family members coming and visiting us, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um we will go to executive session now, board members, any questions or comments or discussion?
I have one question about ADUs in general, um. Is there any restriction one way or the other about using the an ADU as an Airbnb?
Not at this moment in time.
Okay.
I mean, Airbnbs are not. Permitted, so I I know they're everywhere, but um. Technically, anything that's not permitted explicitly in the code is is not permitted, so uh. But I I anticipate there will be regulations um soon on Airbnbs.
So if I understand you correctly, this could not be used as an Airbnb, but it seems like that happens all over the place anyways.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And and main houses are used as Airbnbs.
I I know that very well, yes.
Don't we all?
Hey, any other comments?
I'm actually relieved that um the applicant has reduced this. To um meet the, you know, to meet the ADU requirements. And I would be in favor of granting the C variances.
I I think it's simplified things for us and precedents and. Their intended intensity of use is the same, not that great. And the reason I asked for, you know, sort of the different lots is because. No one's really impacted by the setback. Um or the um the height. Closest neighbor being, I guess, to the west and. This garage or ADU is set back in the the back bar of the lot, so I I don't see any problem. Of impact at all.
Hey, Queen, I don't know if that was the motion that Donna made or?
No, that wasn't a motion.
Okay.
That was a comment.
Got it.
I I would move to approve it, I I think it makes a lot of sense, this this solution and um. You know, make use of a Masonry structure that exists uh. And and uh our concerns were addressed, I think.
I'd I'd second Bernice's motion. Did you make a motion, Bernie, so?
I did, yeah, I did.
Okay, all right. And you seconded it, Harland?
Yes, I seconded it, yeah.
So you, okay, uh is there any discussion, any discussion on the motion? Okay, uh Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Is Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Dobkin?
Yes.
Jeremy Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you. Okay, well, enjoy your property.
Thank you so much, and then we will, um would you like us to submit hard copies of the survey or just email them to Claudia?
You mean the survey or exhibit A A two?
The the whole thing.
Whole thing, uh Claudia, what do you prefer?
Digital or hard copy, or both?
You can just email it to me, I'll print it out, I need to have it in the file.
Okay, thank you, we'll do just that, appreciate your help, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go on to our next case, case number Z twenty-four dash five fifteen.
Thank you, have a good night.
Excuse me?
They're just signing off, they just.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh again, case Z twenty-four dash five fifteen, three forty-seven and three seventy-one Ridgefield Road. Block four oh one, lots thirteen and fourteen in the R, in the RA zone and the RB zone. Okay, Derek, can you summarize your memo on this, please?
Yes.
Wait, we just, Derek, before you begin, Claudia, do we have everyone from the applicant moved over now, I see Mr. Schmidt, but?
I'm here, everybody's here in one.
Oh, you're all together, okay, very good, thank you.
Anybody else, Mr. Schatzman?
My applicant, my uh.
But one, one second, please. Um Karen, is all the paperwork in order?
It is, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
Okay, please proceed.
Mr. Schatzman, do you need anybody else?
Uh Matt Flynn, who should be with us as well.
I'm sorry, say that again, Mr. Schmidt, who?
Matt Flynn.
The planner.
Oh, will you have Mr. McDonough instead, I think so.
Uh McDonough's on with us, yes.
Yeah.
Talk with me, David.
Oh, I I got you today.
Oh, you got Mr. McDonough, all right, all right.
Anyone else?
We got Mr. McDonough today.
Is the applicant online or no?
The applicant is with me.
Oh, okay.
I I couldn't put them all on the camera, so we're gonna have to jostle as we move along, but I'll be, and Richard will be front and center, and once he sits down, you can see his face as opposed to the jacket and. Sit down there, Richard.
I just want to make sure that everyone is on, I don't need to move anyone else.
Patricia um uh with us today, with uh with um Jean Geller, myself, Richard and John McDonough. I could have issued some people your way, John, and we could have spread it out a little bit.
You ready for the introduction, Chairman?
Yes, please.
Claudia, could you please uh share the screen with the subdivision plan? Thank you.
One second, yes.
Thanks. Well, I'll start while she's getting that in order, um Patricia L. Keller has filed, excuse me, hit the wrong memo, too many memos. Application's been filed with the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment by Patricia L. Keller, seeking minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment. With a variance request pursuant to NJ SA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D two. For intensification of a non-conforming use, additional requests are made pursuant to NJ SA forty fifty. Semi-colon fifty-five D dash seventy D one. For conversion of a second-story detached garage to a dwelling unit and continued use of a non-conforming single-family structure. The existing site is identified as lots thirteen and fourteen of block four oh one. And uh. Claudia will have the map up in a minute, um it's located in the RA and RB zoning districts. Lot thirteen is a two point one eight acre with an address of three forty-seven Ridgeview. Containing a single-family dwelling, you can kinda see it in the middle of the screen there, um. That's the existing condition. Uh it has one driveway accessing Ridgeview Road, which serves vehicular access to the detached garage only in the rear yard. Uh vehicular access to the parking area for the single-family dwelling is served by a driveway connected to lot fourteen. Storage containers and above-ground gas tanks are located adjacent to the garage at the rear within the side yard setback, which appears to be operating. Location for GH Keller and Sun Plumbing Company. Lot thirteen is non-compliant as it relates to the minimum required lot size, approximately one point five two acres of lot thirteen lie. In the RB zoning district, the remaining zero point six six acres lie in the RA zoning district. Lot fourteen is a nine point four eight acre lot with addresses of three fifty-five, three sixty-nine and three seventy-one. Ridgeview Road and contains one-three unit multifamily dwelling and two single-family dwellings. Lot fourteen has two driveways accessing Ridgeview Road with one serving a single-family dwelling. And one serving a nine-space parking lot and the driveway to lot thirteen. Approximately one point six six acres of lot fourteen lie within the RB zoning district, the remaining seven point two eight. Eight, seven point eight two acres lies within the RA zoning district. The applicant is seeking a minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment to transfer zero. Point eight four five acres of land from lot fourteen to lot thirteen to make lot thirteen. Complying with zoning as it relates to the minimum required lot size, the applicant is also proposing to convert. One thousand square feet of the second floor of the detached garage, it's located behind the main house. To a dwelling unit. Um the applicant has requested a waiver from the uh buyer protection map and staff has no uh issues with granting that waiver, there are no. Uh new lots are proposed or existing hydrates are located immediately adjacent to these lots. Um as I mentioned earlier, the property is located within the RB and RA zones um. In the ten B, section ten B two fifty-six one includes special provisions for tracts in the RA and RB zones. Subsection B one states, any tract of land lying partially within the RA district and partially within the RB district may be subdivided into lots, which are also. Partially within the RA and partially within the RB district, provided that A, any such lot. Non-complying with bulk requirements for the RA district must comply with the bulk requirements for the RB district and be more than fifty percent within the RB's district and. B, the owner may not plot a number of lots complying with the bulk requirements for the RA district greater than the number. Arrived at by dividing RB acreage by the of the tract by three. The total acreage of the site, subject site is eleven point six acres. Um approximately three point one eight acres lies within the RB district zone per. Then above note B, the maximum number of lots permitted that do not comply with the RA district bulk requirement shall not exceed one. Each, three point one eight acres divided by three. The proposed subdivision complies with this requirement as only one lot is plotted that complies with the RB. Regulations and more than fifty percent of lot thirteen point oh one is located in the RB zone, so uh. The subdivision chart um.
Meeting, I'll call you back.
Shows uh. The new lot configurations, um and you can see on the on the lower uh. Drawing where there there's a Z behind the garage approximately fifty feet, that's the portion of land to be transferred from the larger lot fourteen to the uh. Lot thirteen point oh one. The subdivision plot shall be provided to the engineering department in digital format to facilitate updates to the tax map and shall include two pairs of New Jersey state plan coordinates. The documents shall be provided to the zoning board attorney for before filing with the Mercer County clerk. Um legal descriptions of each slot should be submitted for a review by the municipal land use surveying consultant, the applicant shall submit to Mercer County. Planning board for approval, signature block on the lot line adjustment plan shall be revised to meet minor site. A minor subdivision checklist item E, and the applicant shall review the zoning schedule specifically the present. Percent of lot RA and zone and the percent of lot RB, the percent of RB as the values appear to be inverted. Um discuss the NJ SA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D one use variance on proposed lot thirteen point oh one. The applicant is proposing to convert one thousand square feet of the second story of the detached garage on lot thirteen point oh one to a dwelling unit. Section ten B two seventy-six prohibits more than one main dwelling unit per lot. With the exception of accessory dwelling units in accordance with the provisions of section ten B two fifty-five C three. The provision of this section restricts the size of accessory dwelling units to eight hundred square feet or twenty-five percent. Of the total floor area of the principal dwelling unit. The proposed dwelling unit is larger than eight hundred square feet and exceeds twenty-five percent of the principal dwelling and does not meet the provisions of an ADU and is considered. A second principal dwelling unit. Use variance relief is required from section ten B two seventy-six, um staff. Uh has a couple of comments on the applicant indicates that the portion of the second floor of the detached garage will not be converted. To habitable space for the proposed dwelling unit. Um it's, it appears to be approximately fifteen hundred square foot footprint, the applicant shall advise. Of how this unfinished space will be used and the board should consider how future conversion of this space could increase the degree of non-compliance. Additionally, zoning regulations require two parking spaces per dwelling unit, providing two or more bedrooms, the applicant shall advise which, if any, of the four. Car garage spaces are to be provided for the new dwelling unit. As these are covered spaces, if they are provided for parking, they shall be considered in the calculations of floor area for the new dwelling unit. Uh building department requires that each detached dwelling unit provides separate utilities. If the use variance for the second dwelling unit proposed on lot thirteen point one oh. Zero one is approved, the condition requiring separate utilities should be imposed um. There's also a D two variance intensification of a non-conforming use on proposed lot fourteen point oh one. The existing three-family or three-unit multifamily structure and the two single-family dwellings are non-conforming uses in the RA and RB zones. The reduction in lot area of lot fourteen for the lot line adjustments increases the degree of the non-conformity of this use and requires. Variance relief pursuant to NJ SA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D two. Um staff had to do a lot of research to figure out the the situations going on with these properties, we reviewed tax and zoning records. To determine the approved uses on lot fourteen. The single-family structure cited sixty-three feet back from the street is signed an address of three sixty-nine Ridgeview and was constructed in nineteen fifty. Behind this building lies the other single-family structure assigned as three seventy-one Ridgeview and in its setback, a hundred and sixty-seven feet from the public right away and. It was constructed in nineteen forty-six. The multifamily structure is signed an address of three fifty-five Ridgeview Road and is cited both behind the single-family structures. And it's approximately two hundred ninety feet from the public right away and it was constructed in nineteen seventy-four. On February fifteenth nineteen sixty-eight, the Princeton Township Zoning Board of Adjustment approved an application submitted by. Jean H. Keller to convert an existing barn structure at the rear of the lot into a single-family dwelling. Which resulted in having two dwellings on one lot as a single-family dwelling at three sixty-nine Ridgeview Road would also be maintained. The approval was conditioned on the removal of the single-family dwelling at three seventy one Ridgeview Road prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. For the conversion of the barn. The applicant was granted three one-year extensions in nineteen seventy-three, nineteen seventy-four and nineteen seventy-six to postpone demolition. Of the dwelling at three seventy-one Ridgeview Road. Um staff is unable to locate uh any further zoning relief to continue the use of this structure. The former barn structure was issued a building permit for a single-family residence in nineteen. The former barn structure was issued a building permit for a single family residence in nineteen seventy four, which currently is assigned as three fifty five Ridgeview Road. The tax assessor property record cards confirm that the the use of this property as a single family as of nineteen seventy nine. The next available property record card for this structure reflects that it was a three unit rental dwelling in nineteen ninety six and has continued as such. There is no record of zoning or construction approval for the conversion of this property to a three unit multifamily dwelling. Uh, the principal bureau. Excuse me, the Princeton Bureau of Rental Housing Inspections indicates that the rental housing inspections of the single family dwellings at three sixty nine and three seventy one Ridgeview have been conducted and that there is no record of the multifamily dwelling at three fifty five Ridgeview being registered as a rental. Um, we asked that the applicant address how the single family dwelling at three fifty five Ridgeview was converted to a three unit multifamily dwelling permitted uses in the RA and RB zone are limited to single family dwellings. Um, if the applicant cannot present documentation evidencing the legal conversion of this structure, use variance in exception to NJ SA forty colon fifty five dash seventy D one is required to permit a three unit multifamily dwelling where only single family dwellings are permitted. Alternatively, the applicant shall be required to convert the multifamily back to a single family dwelling as is consistent with a nineteen sixty eight approval. The applicant's narrative indicates that if the subdivision approval is granted, the owner or contract purchaser of lot fourteen point oh one will demolish the single family structures at three sixty nine and three seventy one Ridgeview. And has requested a temporary D one use variance for a term of one year to allow the demolition of the structures. The applicant should address if this is the single family dwelling at three seventy one has been has received zoning relief to continue the use of this structure. If the applicant cannot present documentation evidencing the legal use of this structure, the board shall carefully consider the granting of a one year temporary devan variance for the continuation of a structure that was to be removed between nineteen sixty eight and nineteen seventy seven. The RA and RB zone are permit one single family dwelling and one accessory dwelling unit per lot. The applicant is advised that any future development of this lot that does not comply with the permitted uses above would require a D variance for which the applicant would need to return to the zoning board. A D one and D two variance shall only be granted by the affirmative vote of at least five members. No variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The applicant shall address special reasons to justify the granting the relief requested as required by statute. These special reasons must be shown to be unique or peculiar to the property for which the variance is requested and not generally applicable to neighboring properties. Reasons why the strict application of the zoning prohibition of the requested use or development will deprive deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land or buildings involved and see evidence that the requested relief may be granted without detriment to the public good or impairment of the intent of the zoning plan. The applicant must also describe how their proposal relates to the master pan plan, the proposals impact on the neighborhood, the community's needs, and set forth the legal argument for the proposal as well as other pertinent information. No other relief may be granted under the terms of this section unless such variance or other relief can be granted. I've already I've just gone over my stuff again. So um, there's a couple more comments um. Utilizing the municipality's aerial imagery, I reveals that three storage containers on lot thirteen, that's the smaller lot with the uh uh four car structure in the back um have been on site for several years with the first placed sometime in two thousand eight, second in two thousand twenty one, and the third in two thousand twenty two. The applicant indicates these are storage containers for maintenance of the properties. The applicant shall address the need for these containers uh where there's a thirty four hundred square foot garage located uh immediately adjacent to the containers. The applicant is also required to obtain obtain a zoning permit for these containers. There is also an approximate twenty by forty foot area between the storage containers and a detached garage on lot thirteen that contains water heaters, furnaces, and appliances. There is also possible staging, construction materials, and work vehicles. Per Google Maps, GH Keller and Sons operate as a plumbing business out of this location. Business uses are not permitted in the RA or RB residential zones. The applicant should address the use of the site. And the applicant indicates uh bulk variance relief is required for the side yard setback for lot fourteen and the front yard setback for lot thirteen. These variances are not required as the structures are existing nonconforming structures. The proposed subdivision does not increase the degree of noncompliance of these structures. And the applicant shall confirm the floor area of the existing structures on lot thirteen, including the principal dwelling detached garage, poolhouse, and storage containers. Sorry for my long winded uh summary there, but that's uh introduction to this case. I also have Dan Weisman, the land use engineer here uh for any questions you might have. And we also have Justin um Lesko, the director of planning. He's also uh written a memo on this case too, and I offer any comments from those two gentlemen. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Uh, thank you, Derek. I'd just like to add something quickly. If Karen, you'd like.
We just need to swear you in and Dan will swear you in as well. Do you both swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Good evening. The only thing I really have to add at this time uh on the surface, this seems like a simple two lot subdivision, uh lot line adjustment to make a two complying lots. Uh, if it was simple, I guess it wouldn't be here at the zoning board. Um, but particularly once you start peeling away, uh there are what's going on on the site. There are a lot of question marks that that Derek just mentioned. Um, between the potential plumbing business, uh, the the shipping containers uh on the site, the three unit building uh that that doesn't seem to have approval. The single family building that seems slated or required to go away fifty years ago. Um, so really no comments at this time other than just to echo what Derek said. Um, which was in my my final paragraph, my final comment uh that the applicant should clarify basically what is going on on this site, um what they're proposing uh to happen if this subdivision occurs. And then uh we can look at the menu of variances needed to do that. Um, and the applicant can uh or will be required to provide the necessary testimony for that. So um, nothing outside of that right now, but I very well may have more comments later as things get teased out.
Steve, I think you're muted.
I'm not muted.
Yeah, you are.
You um. I was just wondering if Justin would like to speak at this time.
Or Dan Weisman perhaps?
Nothing, nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
You want me to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Miss parent, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I I do have a request suggestion to consider in there. Clarifying this as Justin is is asked for. Um, I would suggest that the applicant deal with the separate lots sort of don't meld them, you know, um. Go from one to the other. I let us ask some questions on on thirteen as you explain that to us. And and then go to fourteen. That's what I suggest.
That makes sense. I think that's a good approach. Okay. Mr. Schatzman?
Uh, yes, we have three witnesses today. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, the engineer will give an overview. Summary of what Mr. uh Spencer said and Mr. Weisman said. We have the applicant here who lives there. Uh, we'll answer most of your questions and discuss uh his business and his father's business. Uh, I want to make it clear that Eric Keller is this is the son of the Keller who got the approvals way back when. Who's the his father since deceased. And we have Mr. McDonald give the planning report. But uh here the testimony, um. This is what I call a cleanup case where we're going to get rid of all the uh nonconformities. And we're getting rid of the uh single, non-single family houses. So in the end uh to some to give you what's going to happen, there'll be a one house on each of the lots. Each of the lots will conform except for lot thirteen. And we'll explain the one thousand conversion of the garage second floor. The place for Mr. Keller Jr. and his companion to live. And continue on the small part of his business which was started by his father in nineteen fifty three. So with that summary, we'll start with Mr. Schmidt. Will be sworn in and he will give an overview and then we'll proceed with Mr. Keller Jr. And then we'll proceed with Mr. McDonough. Okay?
Okay.
And we'll just Floyd says we'll deal with thirteen and then we'll deal with fourteen.
Mr. Schmidt, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
You want to give your professional background?
Uh, I've testified in front of Princeton Planning Board and Zoning Board for many years. I have thirty nine years of experience. I'm a graduate of uh NJIT. I continually do my.
Excuse me, I you have testified before before. We'll accept you as an expert in the field.
Thank you.
Thank you. And uh you prepared these plans and you visited the site. And you're now giving your presentation.
I'm I'm giving you my very brief presentation, yes. Um, as always, I've been in front of Princeton uh planning and zoning. I'm very familiar with Derek, which are giving a very detailed oriented uh essay on the property. We pretty much eats up all my presentation. I just wanted to go through a couple of things to slow it down because there uh it's it is probably one of Derek's lengthiest reports because of all that's going on on here. Uh, I'll start with sharing the screen and go back to um, the exhibits that they brought up. Okay, you can see on the screen is the uh. All right. Does everyone see the uh existing features plan?
This is your minor subdivision plan, correct?
That's correct. We I I do not have exhibits. John McDonough has exhibits. The only exhibits I'm using is referencing the plans that the board has uh that was submitted to as.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the existing features plan dated May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, uh which is a year from today. We we submitted uh was revised July thirty first, twenty twenty four, and it was prepared by Patrick H Fatten Land Survey LLC. As a requirement by your surveyor, since the minor subdivision uh DS engineering plans title lock was changed to Patrick Fatten and Patrick Fatten signed and sealed uh the minor subdivision plans for our client. Um, as Derek pointed out, we have uh block block four zero one, the existing lot thirteen. Um, you can see my mouse, I hope, is the smaller of the lots. Um, its physical address is three forty seven, located mainly in the RB zone. Uh, the lot area is two point one eight three two acres. It's in the RB zone, which requires three acres. Uh, therefore it's a undersized existing lot. As you can see uh the existing two story single family has an asphalt drive, a detached garage with storage containers and a pool with a small poolhouse. The lot is partially wooded and maintained lawn. There is two driveway entrances involved for Ridgeview Road, one partially on adjacent lot fourteen, which is the same owners of lot of of lot fourteen. So what we have going on is we have up on the top of the page is an existing uh asphalt drive that provides access to the garage in the back, but it does not provide access to the house on along the roadway. That access actually comes off of lot fourteen and then traverses into lot thirteen and then enters to the property. So uh, that is going to be corrected in the minor subdivision, but there there is uh issues with access to the house of which is three forty seven. Again, the garage does have its own access, but the house does not have access um via a driveway against two fourteen. The lot coverage for the lot is eighteen point four three percent, whereas seventeen percent is permitted. Now we go to the bigger lot. Uh, block four oh one, existing uh lot fourteen. The area is nine point four eight oh four acres. It's located mainly in the RS A RA zone, which means it has to be a four acre lot. Uh, the physical address is three fifty five, three seventy one, and three sixty nine. And the reason why I reverse these is I just go from left to right. The big house in the rear of the property is three fifty five, the small tiny house in the center is three seventy one, and the house closest to the road is three sixty nine. Three fifty five is an existing two story multifamily, three family single. So the big house in the back that has three residents in it. And we have adequate parking for housing those properties. Three seventy one, which is the center lot, also has access using this parking lot. And it is a one family, single family house and lot uh three sixty nine has its own access to Ridgeview Road with it has two access points. It has one access from Ridgeview coming up and then it has another one uh also coming in off of. So there's two entrances to three sixty nine. So you know, the lot coverage for that is three point three six, whereas sixteen percent is permitted. Um, we have asphalt drive, asphalt parking patio area, three dwelling units, lot lot is partially wooded within ma- maintained area. So around the house, pretty much the same area of lot thirteen is is somewhat wooded, maintained lawn, but the whole entire rear portion of the property is completely wooded. The purpose of this application, which is the simple uh why we're here, is just a lot line adjustment. Um. What we're trying to do is lot thirteen is an undersized lot where lot fourteen is an oversized lot, which are owned by the same applicant. We're just taking land from lot fourteen to make lot thirteen a conforming lot. The whole intent of this at the very end is that we will probably what we like to do is to sell lot fourteen, remove all the structures and start from fresh. That's the whole purpose of this. And then he retains lot thirteen as his ownership, rents out the house in the front or whatever he intends to use it and then maintains this business in the rear. Um, we do have a professional planner, um John McDonough, who's going to go into the variances that are all required, but that's the the gist of what we're trying to do here, um which opened a bailiwick of 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 comments, which Derek is correct on all accounts. So now I'm going to go to uh I just also wanted to cite, the lot is serviced by gas, electric, PSCNG, water is public uh water, which is New Jersey American Water. Sewers public, which is Princeton, phone, Century Link, and cables Comcast. These are all existing utilities. All are remaining. There is no uh new proposed things going on to this property. So all these utilities will remain the same. Um, now I get to the exhibit, which is the lot line adjustment plan. Again, this plan was submitted to the planning or zoning board dated May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, revised November fourteenth, twenty twenty four, as prepared by Patrick H Fatten Land Survey Inc. As I said, we're trying to merge zero point eight four five two acres from lot fourteen, lot thirteen. So as Derek pointed out, the 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 line, the rear of um lot thirteen with the Z in it. This is the new portion of land that we're adding to the property, which is eight zero point eight four five two acres, which gives us a three point zero two eight four acres. We were originally intended to probably give more property to the to this land, but you have this RA RB zone issue going on. And the more we push it to the rear, the more the property gets into the RA and therefore the more the RA becomes the fifty percent bigger lot than needs to be a four acre lot. And that just created a problem. So we kept the property mainly in the RB zone. And the maximum acreage we could actually give it without going to the RA zone is zero point eight four five two acres. So the total area of this property will be three point zero two eight four acres. And the lot for a lot nine gets reduced to eight point six three five two acres. Um, with that said, being the merging of lot thirteen, the lot coverage of thirteen ten percent is is now decreased. It decreased from seventeen to thirteen and therefore we're now conforming as seventeen percent is permitted. Lot coverage for lot fourteen uh was it was a little bit lower, is now increased to three point eight four percent and sixteen percent is permitted. So we're meeting the lot coverage with this lot subdivision going on. As I said, the driveways were were major issues with this property. What we plan on doing is to construct a a new driveway completely on our property for lot fourteen to negate the cross cross driveway easement that both driveways were using and then removing the gravel. And then removing the gravel, uh, or the asphalt area on lot thirteen. And, and that would create the two lots having their own access. And the existing access way off of Ridgeview Road for, that was accessing the garage will add a little stem to connect the house. Uh, for lot, uh, three forty, for, yeah, just three forty two to have his own access. Again, this separates the two lots, uh, alone. It makes the two lots conforming. Uh, or the lot thirteen conforming in lot coverage and in lot area. And the intent for lot fourteen with all these residences, the, the existing house three fifty five, the existing house three seventy one. And the existing house three sixty nine is intended to be removed. And it's also intended that this will also eliminate the existing asphalt drive that's on Ridgeview Road that services lot three sixty nine. Um, so it's cleaning up the property for the purposes of selling the property in the future to, uh, to a home person that, that would, would. Develop this as a single-family house. Um, lot thirteen still has encumbrances, uh, that will remain, which John McDonough will go over. Uh, on reasons why these, these variances should be granted. Um, there's adequate parking is, that is, that is needed for these, these lots as they are presented to right now. And in the future, and it meets the RSS standards. We're proposing, uh, no tree losses and the increase in, increase and decrease of driveways that we're installing and removing. We have a net increase of three hundred and fifteen square feet of new and impervious surfaces, which does not require stormwater management. Um, a- as far as residential, residential garbage and recycling, that gets roadside pickup on a weekly basis. Um, and I think that summarizes my end as an engineer of what we're doing. Um, it, it, there's a lot of technical things going on, but I think with the, the driveways and the, and, and, and moving things around. That we're going to be cleaning up the property, uh, and it's going to be overall a better look. Uh, once the subdivision is, is perfected. So anyone has questions with me on the engineering aspect of it, uh, I'd be more happy to help.
Board members, any questions of, uh, Mr. Schmidt? Okay, please proceed.
Okay, Mr. Keller, please. Do you want the, the screen up?
You want the exhibit up or do you need it or?
Well, we need it.
Mr. Keller, could you give us your full name for the record, please?
I'm Gene Herbert Keller Jr.
Okay. And sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Keller, you're the son of Gene Keller Senior?
Yes.
And you live now on Ridgeview Road on, uh, lot thirteen or fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, uh, your father had a plumbing and heating business, didn't he, on the property?
Yes, he did.
And, uh, how many employees did he have there? And how many trucks did he have there?
Uh, in the, uh, in the fifties, in the early sixties, he had twenty employees and ran eight trucks.
And that was, when did he start the business? Do you remember?
He started the business, uh, January first of nineteen fifty three.
And as far as you know, he told you that, uh, he got permission from the officials in Princeton to conduct his business. On lot thirteen, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what is your business now that you're doing here?
I'm doing a plumbing and heating business also. It's basically a continuation of that business. Only it's without the employees and all the trucks. It's, uh, myself and an occasional part-time helper.
And what hap- how's your business run, uh, for your clients who pull you up for plumbing, uh, help?
Uh, I'm notified that there's a need and, uh, I go out in the van and take care of what the, uh, the problem is. And then, uh, problem is solved.
Is there any people who come to your house at all?
No, uh, I actually have only had one person and all the time I've been in business, brought their RV there to have the sink fixed.
And do you have some storage there, don't you? What, what's, what, what's, what do you store there in your business?
Uh, well, I stare, store repair parts and I store, uh, equipment needed for different types of work. Because, uh, we do things that require specialized equipment.
And where do they store?
Uh, some of them are in the, uh, what, the north side of the, uh, of the four-car garage. And some of them are in the, in one of the containers.
Okay, and, uh, uh, you plan on cleaning up some of the containers there, am I correct?
Everything's been cleaned up. I mean, just listening to the description of what was on there that Mr. Bridger wrote. Most of what he talked about isn't even there anymore.
Oh, and the house on lot thirteen, well, one of the applications that we're making. Is for a T one, D one variance on the garage that you want to, should you gain approval. Uh, to convert the second floor to a thousand foot, square foot, uh, apartment, so to speak. Uh, for you and your, uh, female mate to, to live in and run your business. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And why don't you, uh, want to live on, uh, the house on lot thirteen?
Uh, it's just basically too large. It's too much house.
And, uh, what are you planning on doing? Uh, and, and so some of the questions that Derek Bridger asks in his memorandum that he read. Uh, he said, uh. That the applicant indicates that a portion of the second floor to the attached garage will not be converted to habitable space for the proposed dwelling unit. The applicant shall advise how this unfinished storage space will be used. And the board should consider how future conversion of the space could increase the degree of non-compliance. Do you want to answer that question? What are you going to use the?
Yes, it looked like there could be up to an additional two hundred square feet there. There wasn't anything that was, uh, allotted for in the design of the apartment or any type of utilities, any type of furnace. Air conditioning, water heater, anything like that. So that's basically what that area would be used for.
And so that wouldn't be livable, it'd just be used for, uh, utilities.
Not habitable space.
And apropos of that, one of his comments was, should you gra- should they grant approval. Uh, you would have to have utilities for each of the, for the unit of the house on thirteen. And the unit, if you got approval for the apartment, over the garage, uh, separate utility meters and everything.
That's already in place.
It, okay, so, uh, it's already there. The applicant shall advise which of any of the four garage spaces, four car garage spaces are to be provided for the new dwelling with, dwelling unit. As these spaces are covered, they should be considered in the calculation of four year for the new dwelling unit. So, uh, the applicant shall advise which of any of the four cars, four car garage spaces. Are to be provided for the new dwelling unit. Do you want to answer that question?
I'm sorry, for the garage space?
Yes.
And none, none of the garage space will be used for vehicles. They've never had vehicles in there. So the garage has always been used for some type of storage. And if, uh, if it's the fact that has a garage door that's an issue, uh, to eliminate the possibility of, uh. Vehicles being stored in there, the garage doors could be removed.
Okay, and then you answered two on staff comments. And then, uh. Jumping over to fourteen, the applicant should address how the single-family dwelling at three fifty five Ridgeview Road. Was converted to a three-unit multi-family dwelling. And he points out, Mr. Bridger, those permitted uses in the RA, RV zone are limited to single-family dwellings. The app, if the applicant cannot present documentation evidencing the legal conversion of the structure, use variances. In a, in exceptions to NJSA forty colon fifty five D one is required to permit the three-unit molding family dwelling. Where only one single-family dwelling are permitted. Alternatively, the applicant shall be required to convert the multifamily dwelling back to a single-family dwelling. That's consistent with the nineteen sixty eight approval. That's what you're going to do. You're going to get rid of the multifamily dwelling. Now tell us about the tenants in that multifamily dwelling at three fifty five.
Well, the tenants are all on leases and they've been informed that their leases will not be renewed. So, uh, we're, uh, helping them the best we can to find new locations.
And as far as the, the leases are up in a few months, am I correct? It's not years.
No, there are a number of months the leases are up.
And then you need, let's say, to the fall to make sure that they're all out. That one, uh, ten, tenants can get out and find new here, new spaces. So if you got approval, that you, you need some more time other than in a couple of months to get the, the tenants out.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
And I might say, and I might interject, that under NJSA two A eighteen hyphen sixty one point one. Since you're removing the property. From, uh, uh, temporarily for, uh, non-tenant purposes. That, uh, that statute, which is the tenant bill rights, doesn't apply. And I'm, I'm adding that. The R, and then number three. Uh, the R, and incidentally, um, the, uh, address at three seventy one. Uh, the, that, that is a single-family dwelling. That's on lot fourteen. That's going to be demolished, am I correct?
That's correct. We've, we've gotten two quotes for that already.
And so you've, you've, uh. You've, you're going to sign a contract. You have two proposals to have it demolished, am I correct?
You're correct.
And upon my advice, I told you, and the reason why we're doing three seventy one, I might interject, is. That was supposed to be done, as Mr. Derek, uh, Bridger pointed out. Uh, when your father got the original approval, he got some extensions, but he, uh. But he, what happened after that? You, you've never, he never told you that he got further extensions?
Well, he didn't, but he also, uh, got sick in that time period. So after the end of it, I was just noticing on the date when that was, that's about when he had the cancer treatments.
And so that's going to be demolished. And in fact, in order to make sure, to guarantee to the municipality of Princeton. Uh, I advise you that we need a performance bond to get it demolished. And should you gra- should you be granted approval, uh, we're going to post a performance bond. Uh, to, uh, guarantee the removal of three seventy one, uh, Ridgeview, since it was. Uh, mandated by the original approval he got when he converted the bar. Am I correct?
You're cor- yes, you're correct.
All right, uh. So, that, that's, uh, fourteen. And the other, the other, uh, dwelling, so the, on lot fourteen, there'll either be one. Dwelling or all of them will be demolished and it'll be sold to somebody for. Uh, to construct one single-family dwelling there, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um. The other staff comments, uh, we talked about the containers, uh. Uh. So you, you really won't need, this is additional staff comments on page. Now it's four point oh. So you really, you really, uh. What are you going to do again to repeat with the storage, uh, containers?
Well, the containers right now are, but one of the containers has all the equipment for maintaining the property. Lawn mowers, chainsaws, snow blowers, everything that's in there. And then one of the other kid, the other container there has things that we've been accumulating that if there's a future apartment to be built. That the things that are stored in there currently would be used for the construction of that apartment.
And he's, they point out there's an approximate, and Mr. Bridger read this, twenty foot by forty foot area between the storage containers. And detached garage on lot thirteen that contains water heaters, furnaces and appliances. There's also possible stage home construction materials and work vehicles. For Google Maps, G H Keller is an operator as a plumbing business at this location. He described your plumbing business. His, business uses are not permitted in the RA, RV residential districts. The applicant should address the use of the site. As you said, you have to, you continue on a business. That, that was, um, non-conforming. I might add, as a legal matter. Uh, the COX points out that the zoning board. Pressed the, uh, fact of the ordinance. Mr. Bridger was kind enough to supply me all the old ordinances in Princeton. And in nineteen thirty eight, which was the first ordinance, uh, zoning ordinance. Uh, the, they permitted, uh, home occupations in, uh, the, uh. In all residential zones. And it could very well be that they considered this a home occupation. And it's been going on for seventy three years. And my argument would be that the zoning board. Uh, could draw an inference that this is what happened and it's been going on for seventy three years. And as far as you know, Mr. Keller, nobody ever told you, men, no, but, nobody ever made a complaint about your business, am I correct?
Never had a complaint.
And as far as what the business would be, uh, what about your neighbors? Um, how far away is it from your neighbors, especially in the back there?
Oh, there's a hundred, several hundred feet away or more for the house that was built down in the woods.
So there's woods there, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh. Do you know the floor area on existing structures on lot thirteen at all, the total floor area? Uh.
On, uh.
Certainly, maybe on the house.
On, on three forty seven?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, give me a minute. Um, I think it's around, uh, thirty two hundred square feet, just off the top of my head.
Okay. And as, like, as you said, there are, uh, you need the, you need opera, you, you. The, the house on lot thirteen is too big and you need to live somewhere. You've been living there all your life and the thousand square feet conversion, should you get approval of the. Second floor of the garage would be adequate for you and your mate to, to live in and, uh, run your business, am I correct?
That's correct.
There any, uh, other? Anything you want to add, um? I think I have any more questions for you, and I think I covered what Mr. Bridger raised, uh.
Mr. Keller, just a clarification, because it's, uh, the volume isn't very loud. Um, um, in terms of being able to hear you, um. You just testified, if I heard that correctly, the principal dwelling on lot thirteen, you said it's thirty two hundred square feet approximately?
Uh, I'm, I'm, yeah, I was looking that up. I have that here somewhere. I think that's approximately what it is.
Okay, and so your plan though is to keep the single-family home? And you want to convert the second floor of the detached garage. For you and your partner to live in. What do you plan to do with the single-family home on lot thirteen?
Well, it's current, it's currently a rental. It would just stay as a rental.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board of this witness? From the president or the board members?
Nope. Okay.
I just need a more clarification. What is the address of the building you want to build the second story? Uh, unit on, that three fifty five?
Oh, second story, uh, three fifty five is a molding family dwelling on lot fourteen to be fourteen point oh one. Uh, the, uh, lot thirteen is, uh.
Three forty seven.
Three forty seven.
Okay, three forty seven, thank you.
Yeah. So that stays and if he grant approval for this, uh, what I call cleanup application. He just needs the, the D one variants for the garage conversion. Because it's over eight hundred, it's over a hundred square, eight hundred square feet by two hundred square feet. The size of parking lot, of parking, uh. Small parking area and, um, that's what, that's what he needs and he needs to continue on with his business. The other, the, the, uh, the. The other, the the uh, the lot fourteen pointed out by uh this, this uh, the applicant's testimony, Mr. Schmidt's testimony. Uh we're we're knocking down three seventy one, and we're posting a performance bond. Because that was supposed to be done years ago, and as testimony of Mr. Keller. His father was supposed to get extensions, but he got cancer, he got sick, and subsequently died. So we're gonna clean that up now, and we're gonna have a performance bond to make sure it gets done, which should have been done a while ago. And until Mr. Bridger pointed that out, when we, when we filed this application. You know, no one, Mr. Keller Junior thought it, it was, it was legal. He didn't know. Father told him so, and and he knew he got extensions, but he didn't know how many extensions he got. So we're gonna get rid of that. And so in the end, and then the three fifty five, which was uh made a three, uh three, three unit, a single, uh three unit residential. We're gonna get rid of that. We're gonna convert that either to a, a single family if it, if it stays. And demolish, we're demolishing three seventy one. And the other one, uh which was the uh three sixty nine, it's gonna go. So you're gonna have one single family dwelling on lot fourteen, and that's the, and then it conforms. And that's, that's the per- we're we're cleaning it up as well as doing, as Mr. Schmidt said, as well as making the lots conform to the R A R V zone, uh because they both live, they're both in lots are both in both zones. And so, you know, we're just cleaning everything up, which which admittedly should have been done a while ago. But nobody knew about it until Mr. Bridger researched everything. Mr. Wiseman researched everything, and so this is what we're doing.
Yes, just, just for clarification, so your client is proposing for lot fourteen, they will post a performance bond to demolish three seventy one Bridgeview Road, correct?
Correct.
Alright, then, three sixty nine, are you planning on demolishing that as well?
Yeah, we were gonna have, we're gonna either have three sixty nine, three, there's gonna be one, it's either the demolish or sold with the other, with with three fifty five demolished. And uh and uh and three, 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 there's gonna be one, gonna be one, three seventy one's gotta go. So that's gone. So you have two dwellings, three fifty five and three sixty nine. Three fifty five, we don't know how that became a three uh, three unit house. So we're gonna convert that or demolish that. Uh so uh if it's, if it's converted, if we want single family dwelling. And the three sixty nine, the other house is gonna be demolished.
So is the bond, is the, is the bond you're pro- you're proposing gonna cover three sixty nine as well, or?
No, it's gonna cover three seventy one, because we don't know what we're gonna do with three sixty nine. But it's, we don't know which which one's gonna demolish. Three seventy one has to be demolished, Miss Casey, because that was supposed to be done
I understand that.
Senior
Yeah.
Original approval. So we've gotta get rid of that. That should have been done years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So three seventy one is demolished, for sure. What's gonna happen with three sixty nine or three fifty five, we don't know. But it's gonna be either one or the other. Three, if three fifty five stays, it's gonna be converted into a single family dwelling. If it's demolished, then the nonconformity is gone. If three sixty nine uh is demolished, then three fifty five will be uh converted into a single family dwelling, which should have been done. Which no one knows how it got converted. No one knows. It's been done, as Mr. Bridger talked about, years and years ago. Nobody knows. The, the person who converted it or did it is now dead.
So your client wants a, I'm looking at Mr. Bridger's memo, a temporary D one use variance for a year. That I guess he can determine whether, whi- which structure he's keeping, three fifty five or three sixty nine?
Or or none, or both of them are going down.
Both of them are going down.
Could be.
We don't know yet, but there's only gonna be one, so three seventy one's gonna be gone, because that
Right.
Should have been done. So you have two, two houses. You got three sixty nine. You got three sixty nine and three fifty five. Three fifty five is a three family, three unit dwelling. That's gonna be converted if it stays. And then three sixty nine will be demolished. If three sixty, if three fifty five gets demolished, then the uh, the nonconformance is gone. But so you got, so you have one house on lot fourteen. That's what's gonna happen. So everything then conforms. And becomes, the only thing that that stays, that we're looking for, for relief is the conversion of the garage on the second floor. So that he can continue his business. His testimony is that the house thirteen is too large. It's gonna rent it out. And it's, it becomes a rental probably, property for the municipality. But he's, and it's too large for him and his female mate. And he, he can live in a thousand square foot apartment on top of the garage and run his business with the one truck and and continue on that's been done for the last seventy three years. So, and and on a smaller scale, because you heard the testimony, his father had many employees and
I, I have a, I have a question, please.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, and actually I'd like to direct it to Karen, because I, I had some of the same questions that she's asked regarding fourteen. Um Karen, the temporary use wasn't that gonna be attached to the, the three unit rental?
That's, that's why I was asking. I'm, I'm not clear on this at all, so.
Right, and if they, if they for any bit of time, keep three fifty five and three sixty nine. Isn't that a violation, because it's, it's two principal dwellings?
Correct.
So, I need a, well, I, yeah, I would hope we'd have assurances that like three seventy one either three fifty five or three sixty nine is coming down immediately.
Well, we have, we have tenants in there, and here, as soon as the tenants get out. And that's when it's gonna be uh demolished. You can't, it could tell it's out.
Okay, I want, yeah, what's the, what's the assurance that you'll get, get them out of either one of those?
So they, so we need until September, the end of September, to get them all out. The leases are up, and they have, you know, you, you just can't throw them out on the street on Ridge Room Road.
Well, we understand that, but we're asking what assurances there will be, and that hasn't been addressed.
Yes, that's the question. Don't answer, don't answer a question I didn't ask.
Oh.
Answer what I, you know, which is what's our assurances? Thank you, Harley. And if you, and if you're not providing any assurances on three fifty five and three sixty nine. Then say that.
We, we intend to get those people out, because uh we want to comply to make this a conforming type subdivision. And that's what we're trying to do. What assurances we have? You can uh, you can hold up the subdivision until, until such time as they're out or or whatever. I mean uh
Let me jump in a second. Hi, Patricia Keller here, just here to hop in.
Swear.
Oh, swear me in.
Do you swear from your testimony this evening, Ms. Keller, will be truthful?
Absolutely.
And Ms. Keller, you are, I understand, then the representative of the estate of Lauren Keller? And that is the applicant in this application, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I would just like to clarify a little bit, a little bit of the strategy here and what we're thinking. So here's the condensed version. Three seventy one has to come down, because my dad never took it down, and we want to be conforming and compliant. Okay, done. Okay, three fifty five, we're taking out, we've already given the tenants notice. It's gonna be converted back to a single family home, okay? So three fifty five and three sixty nine are gonna be single family homes. The plan is that once the subdivision happens, I'm gonna be optimistic here, eight acres and three acres were done. The eight acres is gonna be sold, okay? Then when the stip- I wanna make a stipulation, that when whoever buys, either they're gonna knock down both of the houses. Or at least they're gonna add a minimum, knock down three sixty nine, so you will only have a single family home on that lot. Does that make sense?
Ms. Keller, make, I, I understand your I understand your argument, but I think what the board is trying to find out then is I don't, I don't know how quickly you can sell it, so that there'll be a period of time where you have, sounds like two at least two single family structures out there.
So, so three seventy one is coming down.
Yep.
We've been in contact with three different builders and realtors. And I'm in the process of moving forward with this process as quickly as I can. Once I know what the outcome is, whether I have eight acres to sell, or if I have eleven acres to sell. So I'm hoping it's the eight, that's my plan. So that is the deal. So I'm moving forward with this. So that's all I can say. I'm in the works.
So are you, are you planning to do a contract to sale with three fifty five and three sixty nine being the obligation of the purchaser to solve problems?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say no.
Well, if the, if the temporary, if the temporary use for one thing, and if we give you that, then it's gonna fall on the buyer to satisfy that. Wouldn't it?
Well, well, we can work that out. I don't know who's gonna do it.
Well, it does, but wouldn't it fall on the buyer? I'm trying to.
I don't.
Well, we'll do it, we'll do it.
Do it, we'll do it.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry, we didn't address three sixty nine specifically tonight, because as of right now, three sixty nine is approved use from a previous zoning board application. So since it was approved back then, we didn't feel the need to, to address it at this moment. And that's why we, we're a little unprepared as to exactly when that's gonna come down.
Well, Mr. Mr. Keller, I know, I'm sure you understand that you can't a lot, have all those single family residences on one lot. So that's why your lawyer has said, you're gonna bond now to take down three seventy one Ridgeview. Because that was to have been removed many years ago, so.
So, so yes, I understand that we can't have them, and we understand that the, that the uh three family uh one was just done verbally with my father, that someone told him that he could have an apartment and a flat in a building. But he never followed up on that. But at the time, the um that it was supposed to take three seventy one down, it was also approved at that time that three sixty nine and three fifty five could stay on one lot.
Yep.
Yes.
So in fact, though, then you really do want a, a temporary variance to let you have two single family homes on lot fourteen.
Until we, yes, until we get, until we go, until we decide whether one of them is gonna come down or one of them is gonna stay, but
We're both go down.
We're both, we're both go down.
We don't know.
And it'd be a vacant lot, and it'll be on, the, 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 if approval is granted, we agree that there's only the one single family on lot fourteen.
Again, how are you gonna assure that to us?
It's an enforcement issue, Mr. It's an enforcement issue, and um it, it's gonna be done, and the zoning officer will have to make sure it's enforced.
Typically in this
Are you saying that, are, are you proposing then that these would be conditions to the minor subd- are you proposing that these be conditions to the minor subdivision?
Yes.
Well, that would mean then, that you couldn't perfect the subdivision though, until the conditions were met.
We will perfect the subdivision when everything is done. We, we will perfect the subdivision, we have a hundred and eighty days. We get extension, we can perfect the uh, the subdivision when the, when there's a single family dwelling on each of the lots. And the either, the, the three, the three seventy one is definitely going. And three fifty five ninety are either going to be gone or three fifty five converted to a single family and three sixty nine demolished. Or three sixty nine demolished.
Right.
And three fifty five exists as a single family dwelling.
Right. So your position to the board would be that that's the assurance the board will get, that you, your client can't move ahead to perfect the subdivision until there's only one single family home on lot fourteen.
That's right.
Does that answer your question, Michael?
Answers my question, but it also goes into um then it ultimately also says that the, the three unit structure will at worst become a one unit structure.
That's right.
Correct.
Yes, if, if we're all clear on that. Yeah, so forget, forget about, yeah.
We don't know how it happened, so, you know, Mr. Bridger brought it up, but I mean, he says, as an alternative, we can convert it to a single family dwelling.
So, yeah, so now it sounds like you will convert it if, if, if um three um fifty five stays, you will convert it. If that's the final one, you will convert it to a one family.
Very definitely.
Yes, the tenants have already been given notice, and they will go out by, let's say, the latest September.
So the option of keeping it after the tenants, as a three unit, you're no, you're no longer seeking that from us?
Correct.
No.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay, we got somewhere then.
And yes, because Mr. Bridger brought it up. Uh we were always, the applicant always thought it was okay. He's, he said, there's no proof of it. Fine, we're not gonna argue with him. We'll just convert it, that's all. Convert it or demolish it. Get rid of it.
That's clear. Thanks for clarifying.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Uh I have one. Uh not to beat a dead horse on three sixty nine Ridgeview. But can you talk about the condition of that building? Uh because frankly, I, when I was out there a few weeks ago, it seemed like it might have been vacant, but is it? Does somebody live there? Is it habitable right now?
No, it's currently vacant.
It's currently vacant. Okay, so the, oh, but it, it's, it's in decent enough shape that you could bring it back if you needed to? Yes. Yes. Okay.
Can I uh ask a question, Mr. Cohen?
Sure.
I'm concerned by the timeline. It's a minor subdivision. You have a hundred and eighty days or to, with, which to file a deed. Just, it seems like the strategy's unraveling or unfolding in front of us here. It kind of feels a little bit like deja vu from nineteen seventies again, about the maintenance of these, the maintaining of these structures. And I, I, I frankly don't understand how if you never came back and honored your part of the agreement, when this variance was granted in the seventies, which was to demolish the one home. How that vests rights to maintain another single family home there. But having said that, you have to have a reason for an extension for a subdivision, and it's gotta be, it's gotta have, you know, teeth and have base Teeth and have basis and, and so, it can't be because of procrastination or. The lack of the, demolishing these buildings on your part, so I'm concerned about that not being done in a proper timeline and then coming to the board. And then without a, a good reason, like you didn't get approval from an outside agency, why should the board grant you an approval?
Well, well, first of all, it wasn't I that came for the approvals. It was my father and I had no knowledge of, of him even going into the board and getting these approvals. So it wasn't that, that I was ignoring to do them, I had no knowledge that they needed to be done.
And can I just jump in too? So I'm trying to be proactive. So when we found out that these things were not the way they were supposed to be, I'm like, alright, we gotta get three seventy-one demolished, we got the estimates. Alright, we gotta give the tenants notice, we gotta get them out of three fifty-five, like we are trying to be compliant and that's all I can say. We're, we're doing what we know is wrong, we're trying to fix it, we're trying to clean it up, as Richie said.
And I appreciate that, you've been, you know, very, uh, open about that, it's just, I don't know what enforcement is, what, what tools do I have? If the subdivision doesn't get filed, we still have a situation with too many houses on one lot. I mean typically we ask for some type of bond or money that can, but that's not with a subdivision, cause it's, it's dependent upon the subdivision, so. I'm looking for some enlightenment on how that. How we can make this happen in a timely manner that doesn't trip you guys up when you need an extension for your minor subdivision.
Before the subdivision, before the subdivision is proved, if we're gonna demolish. We, we're gonna give you a, a performance bond for three seventy-one, okay? So that, that's gonna be, that's a condition of approval, should you grant approval. If we're going to, if we decide in a couple of months and we have a hundred and eighty days, it's well-known, it's a lay-in school. We're gonna demolish a house, the other house, then, um. We'll post another performance bond, that's all, and you know it's gonna be done. We only have, we, we have, we, we can demolish, we definitely gonna demolish three seventy-one. And we either gonna demolish three sixty-nine.
Probably, not three fifty-five, I'm thinking three sixty-nine would go down.
Three, yeah, or, or three fifty-five, so we'll give you a performance.
I have a question, Steve.
Yes, please.
Could we flip the approval and make the approval contingent on? The other property becoming a single family property?
Stephen, I think, I think this is what the applicant's been saying, that they're willing. To make that a condition and that they wouldn't be able to complete their subdivision until this happens, but I think Derek's raising the question. That, uh, the hundred and eighty days goes by, the applicant says, gee, we weren't able to, uh. Get all the demolition done, we're negotiating with a purchaser, you know, whatever the scenario is. And Derek's concerned the applicant will come back in again and say, oh, well, we need time, we need an extension.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, we don't, we don't give them approval until they clear up the other property.
Well, a hundred and eighty days goes by. And if you're giving a good, we're, we're gonna do it before a hundred and eighty days, if a hundred and eighty days don't go by, the subdivision. Uh, almost goes away, the approvals go away, that's what happens. And so, so if I come in and say, we need more time, and you say, well, you had enough time. And we're not giving the extension, the hundred and eighty, eighty days goes by, then, then it's all, then it's.
It's moot.
Then it's moot, you know, it's gone. But I mean, we mean it, you know, to get, to get to. Quite frankly, I think that the, the, the more money as a monetary view. Is in the getting rid of all the houses on lot fourteen. Quite frankly, it's a vacant lot, it's a nice big vacant lot on Ridgeview Road.
And, and Mr. Bridger, let's, let's just go back a, a few steps here, I, I understand that things have, weren't done and they weren't done in the past, but. Honestly, I've lived on Ridgeview Road my whole life, and I'd like to continue to live there. And I'm just looking for a way to cut to the chase of it, that I can continue to, to live there with the apartment above there. And if we basically brought, like my sister said, we brought all of this up front to try and conform. The two acre that was cut off there was conforming when it was created. The, uh, if we were just to knock down three seventy-one and get rid of the, uh, uh, the additional units in, uh. In three fifty-five, so it was single family, three sixty-nine was previously approved when the other one was. Uh, knocked down, that it could stay there, so we're trying to bring things up to the way they are now. Uh, to be quite honest with you, this is, this is gonna move very quickly or as quickly as we can possibly make it move. And that, and that's all I can really tell you, I mean, uh, if, if you need other performance bonds or other things to guarantee it. I understand that you have to look out for the fact that, uh, what gets approved is gonna get accomplished. But there's no, nothing on our end that's, that's not going to move it as quickly as possible to get it accomplished.
I, I understand you, I take you at your word, it's just like, it's, it's June now, so June is thirty days, July's thirty. August is thirty, that's ninety days, the tenants leave in September, that's a hundred and twenty days, then you have. If something goes wrong, you're at a hundred and eighty days and, you know. Is, you, you, you're gonna be out of time to get the subdivision done, and then the extensions need to have a valid reason, so. I just point, I just don't wanna take you down a lane and then it's a dead end.
But, but is your biggest concern the, uh, the demolition of three sixty-nine, is that what your concern is?
No, my biggest concern is that this, whatever happens tonight. Is able to proceed and get done in a timely manner, whether all three houses are demolished on lot fourteen, or it's just. The big houses returned to a single family, whatever you wanna do, that it's done within the time to allow the subdivision. And I hate to bring up lot thirteen, but, you know, lot thirteen is. The ADU, the second residence, I mean, it's impossible for us from a zoning point of view to, to separate that dwelling unit. That's nestled on part of the, partial part of the, the second floor. And the stairs to it come right up through the, you know, the center bay of the garage, which. Typically, that would all be included as an ADU, um, so that would be the, that would be the variance, I mean, it's. It, the way it's, and I understand it's an existing condition, but this is things that we're trying to think about how to, to work out, um. And I just wanna throw that out there, cause it's, it is an issue, so.
So you've made it loud and clear that, that, that we gotta do it within a hundred and eighty days, otherwise the subdivision is not gonna be perfect. And so, for hell or high water, they're gonna do it within a hundred and eighty days, and the sooner the better. And if you want performance bonds, the, uh, the applicant agrees to it. They, we're gonna give you a performance bond for three seventy-one, and if we demolish three fifty-five or three sixty-nine. We'll give you a performance bond for that. Oh, what else I can recommend, but I mean, that's, that's what we, that's the best we can do. And so the board's got to decide on the basis that it's not this, uh, applicant, uh. That, that made the non-conformity, it was the, his father, and his father's gone, so we, we don't know what happened. But, uh, it's not, as far as the business is concerned, it's not unreasonable or. Uh, because of the nineteen thirty-eight ordinance, that, that somebody made a determination, uh, that it was a, uh. A, uh, uh, home occupation, which was allowed in those years at every residential district.
Steve, may I ask a question?
Please.
Um, Mr. Keller, where do you live presently?
I'm currently living in three fifty-five.
Okay, and you are requesting. A second principal residence on lot thirteen. It doesn't meet the ADU requirements because it is over eight hundred square feet. Yes? And Derek, I think what you're saying is that it's not just one thousand square feet. But it's more than that because of the garages, is that true?
Uh, yeah, it's impossible to, to separate the two uses. I mean, just because of the history of the way it was developed, since it was built, and I, I think it was built in the mid nineties, so, uh.
Ninety-four.
Okay, so, so we're not just talking about a thousand square feet. That's being requested, we're talking about more than that.
I think you have to talk about the whole structure, I mean, but I mean, you could put a condition that. Um, you know, it's tough to enforce, but that the residential portion of it is limited to X amount of square feet. Uh, Karen, I think, is that acceptable, or?
It is, I mean, as you said, it's really an enforcement issue, so I guess at some point when there's inspections. Construction inspections, then I don't know, at some point, you know, they would be made aware of that, that that's the only square footage. That is supposed to be livable space, so the inspector would have to be looking for that when he goes out. We'd say those are the conditions, so.
Yeah, well, that, that sounds hard for the inspector, um. Mr. Keller, you've asked for a thousand square feet, the ADU ordinance allows you eight hundred. Is there a reason that this can't be reduced to eight hundred square feet?
Well, it wa- it was difficult to get a room layout, the other thing the ADU only allows for is. One bedroom and it needs to have two bedrooms. So if we were asking for a variance for that, it made it a lot easier, where the stairwell comes up can't be changed. And with the stairwell coming up where it is, it makes it difficult to, uh, to use it as eight hundred square feet. Because it cuts it off where in the middle where a window is and some other issues that were there for when the building was built. Now, the, uh, there's not as much square footage, the, there's no way that the downstairs area would ever get used for living space. And that, that can be corrected by removing the doors, if it's an issue of the garage doors on there. That can be, uh, that that can be changed. And it's just strictly the way the layout would have to be upstairs to get two bedrooms, bathroom and, uh. A kitchenette area and then, and then some type of other, uh, open space there. And that's the whole reason why we went for the thousand square feet. There's more room than that up there, it isn't the whole footprint of the building, because the way it was built. There's a knee wall that was built in there that, that makes it smaller on the second floor. So instead of it being asking for the twelve hundred square feet that were there. We felt that it would be more palatable to the board to ask for the thousand square feet.
Um, alright, Derek, is there a requirement in the ADU ordinance that there only be one bedroom?
Uh, there's a requirement, uh, limits habitable rooms to, uh. Three habitable rooms, which would be a living room, bedroom, not a kitchen, not a, not a bathroom or laundry room. But a dining room that's separated by a alcove from the, the kitchen or. One big kitchen, living room area is gonna be counted as one habitable room, so. He, he did submit plans, um, it does have, uh, what I would call like a, a great kitchen room area and two bedrooms. He, he does have three habitable rooms, um. I could, you could see the picture that he submitted, I see what you're saying, the, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just unsure.
Yeah, no.
It's, it's just not clear to me at all, um, Mr. Keller, also the, um. The main home on, um, Ridgeview, did you say it was rented?
Uh, three forty-seven, yes, three forty-seven has been rented for quite a few years.
Okay, to how many families?
Uh, there are two individuals living in there, a man and a woman, but they're not a couple.
Okay. Yeah, I, 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 I just have some concerns about the proposed variance to the ADU, you know, the application before this. We, you know, we had expressed concerns and they were able to reduce it to the eight hundred square feet for the ADU. And then we're confronted with the same situation again.
Now, I, I don't know what, what to say, other than I guess I'd have to go back and see if there was a way that we could, that we could fit in there that. Would, would work with eight hundred square feet.
I think the thing is with the one before, it wasn't, weren't they, was the building already constructed the way it was? Or were they doing knockouts or doing something else to make it habitable space? Cause this is already, like, I don't wanna say pre-made, but the room, like, it's already kinda set up already with the square footage. Was the one previously the same way with the eight hundred, or did they knock out, they sound like they were doing a kitchen and a shower and some other thing? It sounded like it was a little bit different situation. That's what's what I gathered.
No, I, I think they, they had some, they, they had a structure in place and, and they had to switch it around a bit.
On the garage structure, are those garage doors, the picture, I couldn't tell, I didn't drive all the way back there, cause. On. Mr. Keller, on, on the two-story barn, is that a, does it have four garage doors that open into the driveway area, or?
The, the, the one that's there now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, the garage doors open into the driveway area. Only one, only three of them though are at grade to the driveway, the fourth one is not, it's above.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Keller, uh, it seems to be that, uh, you had mentioned you intend to continue, uh. Operating the plumbing business, um, at this location. Um, and I believe you said that you would be renting the front building, that's three forty-seven, and you would. Reside on the upper floor of the garage.
Correct.
What, what would be the use of the first floor of that garage? Would that be for storage for the home occupation plumbing business?
It would be.
Okay, um, so I think it's just important to keep that in mind, because if it's not as part of the one principal dwelling. Uh, I think it'd be good to know that it's actually part of the other principal dwelling that you're proposing. Um, and it's important to, to be reminded that the variance is for a second principal dwelling, um, not for the size of an ADU.
Um, good point.
What, what is the position regarding running the business out of, um, out of the back garage?
Uh, I'm sorry.
You, and you intend to continue running the business out of, out of the, um, out of the garage. And I think you said, but the business consists of at this point is whatever you're storing there. And you responding to house calls.
Correct. So, so there's nothing, nothing there other than storage of my equipment and the materials that are used for the business.
Oh.
And that's all there is.
And, and what kind of stuff is that, sir?
Well, well, the, uh. I guess it's the tools that you would use for plumbing, it was the tools that you use for drain cleaning. It's, uh, the tools you use for putting pipe together, uh, it's.
It's the piping, it's the fittings, it's, there's a lot of stuff in there.
The, the repair parts that are needed when you go into someone, when they have a leaking faucet or a leaking toilet, or all those different things. And unfortunately, years ago, everything was, was pretty much the same and you could use generic parts. Nowadays, the manufacturers have found that if you sell their part, if they sell their part, they make more money. So there are much more little things that have to be kept in stock.
And, and you're gonna propose to store everything in the, in the garage, that, that first floor garage? And not in the present storage units that are there?
Well, the present storage units, so like I said, they have, the, I imagine it could be relocated in there. We're currently going through the things that are in the garage, because they've been there, some of them since the business was first started. And that's why they're being sorted and, and disposed of, either recycled or sold or gotten rid of. And probably when it's all done, yes, the, uh, tools could also be sold, kept in there that are in the one bin. Uh, the other bin would probably remain, because it has all the lawn care stuff, the lawnmowers. The, the chainsaws, the snow blowers, all that kinda stuff. And the third bin is stuff that currently is, has materials that are gathering, if we're able to build a future, uh, apartment. And that would no longer be necessary too.
Is anything currently stored in the front house, the three forty-seven?
In the what?
No, no, that's a rental home, no.
No, it's a rental house.
Okay, so nothing's being stored in there for the business?
No.
Okay, um, Derek, is there, I, I'm just wondering who I asked of the township about the business. Is, is this an issue, is it not an issue? Is, is this an issue? Is it not an issue?
It's, it's, we're, it's, uh, not a permitted use. Um. I don't necessarily think, if I was making the call, I wouldn't call it a home occupation. I don't think that's the intent of it, but, uh. You know, he's provided testimony and I think the board has to rely on the applicant's testimony and analyze that. Uh, but it, the only permitted uses are single family dwellings, accessory dwelling units. And home occupations, which are very limited to like, no outdoor signage, four hundred square feet of. The first floor of that building and it's, it's a very limited scope. It, this far exceeds, um.
Do, so we don't know if he meets the ordinance for a.
No, he, we're, we're saying he does not meet the ordinance.
He does not.
The, that's why we're.
Not, not, it's not allowed.
Yeah.
To have this business at that location. So the applicant has argued that. Going back in time to nineteen thirty-eight.
Yeah, no, I heard that.
Had an ordinance, it said you could have a home occupation. Didn't define home occupation, is that a home occupation with a permit? You could conduct that kind of business. Then the ordinances were amended in nineteen fifty-five. And then I think after that, it, it moved, shall we say, into more, um, modern times. And in the seventies, it was amended and then continued to be amended. So. One of the issues for the board is, the applicant has said, his father told him when he was alive that. He got permission to have the plumbing business there. Um, I'm not sure how relevant that is. I mean, what Mr. Keller believes, I, I, I don't think that anybody is questioning him saying. Because he's not the one that began the business. Uh, so for the board, I, I think perhaps the issue would be more. If you believe that this was a home occupation. Right, and it doesn't seem to be debated that it began in nineteen fifty-three. You know, was it allowed then or not? If it wasn't, then the applicant has said, then they would like a variance for that. If they've been there a long, long time, so they're asking the board, well, then just give us a variance. You know, if you're not persuaded by, you know, what Mr. Keller senior. Said in the past to his family about, because there's no record of any approval or permit for it.
And that, Karen.
Yep.
And, and that would be, if I'm understanding correct, it's covered, um, the variance request for a D two. Would. That non-conforming use, is that covering?
Well, actually, that would be the, that would be a D, uh, well, Derek's talking about, well, he's, he's talking about two things. He's talking about the D two would be because lot fourteen is being reduced in size. So Derek's comment was with three unit multifamily structure and two single family dwellings.
Right.
You're intensifying the non-conforming use. The applicant has said tonight. That shouldn't be a concern.
Okay, yeah.
Been a bond, take care, take down, so there'll only be one single family home on that property. But what they do need, if you don't find this testimony persuasive about. Uh, approval, uh, long ago, um, they would need to use variants to conduct the plumbing business. On lot thirteen.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's not being asked in the original, you know, submission to. To us?
Well, I think what the applicant, what the applicant has argued is that. They think, they believe that. The board should weigh, was the business begun in nineteen fifty-three?
Okay, yeah.
Was there an approval for it back then? If not, then. They acknowledged they would need a use variance to continue the use.
Never.
That one doesn't bother me so much. I think a business has been in, I, I, I'm jumping the gun to discussion, but there should be. Should, should be some kind of grandfathering thing in there, isn't there Karen? Or I, I guess it's just been ignored?
Well, I, I won't say it's been ignored. I, I guess it's not something that, um. There, you know, there was any, nothing was drawn, no attention was drawn to it. And so, and also there's, you know, residences there as well. So. I, I don't believe that it would stand out as a non-residential use. So if you weren't looking for it or, or had a complaint about it. There wouldn't have been, there would have been no reason for the zoning officer to call it out. And I don't think it's disputed that it's been used that way for a long, long time. It's a question of. W- was it allowed long ago? If it wasn't, um, then. Yes, they would need a variance now for.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, I have a, a question about the, the storage. I'm trying to understand, once. Things are cleaned out of the containers and consolidated and, and, and moved. How many square feet of storage are we actually talking about? I, I'm not quite clear on that. And, and then you're talking about removing garage doors. So are, are things being stored in. An unenclosed space that's, uh. Open?
Well, no, the, the, the issue was as, as if the, uh, vehicle storage was underneath in the. In the building, there's never been vehicle storage in there. The garage doors were there strictly for convenience and to get airflow in the summer. When, uh, when moving things in and out in the storage, uh, one side of the building was, was storage for plumbing material. The other side of the building was, uh, was where my dad's shop was. And where at that time he had the lac tractors, lawn mowers, things like that. So we needed a place to be able to sort things from the plumbing side to, uh, to get rid of things that were there. So that's when everything that had to do with the lawn care was moved into these storage bins. Uh, the one storage bins to maintain it. So the one storage bin has all of that. One, the other storage bin has equipment that's used, uh, for plumbing. The actual, not the materials, but the actual equipment that is used to do the job. And the third one has materials that, uh, well, actually is materials that are used for maintenance of the buildings. But also it has materials that would be used for the construction of a future apartment. That we've been accumulating as things become available, uh, that you see them and they're, they're still good, no reason to throw them out. They've been put aside for use in the future.
So, eh, but long term, how much storage for your business is going to be on the property?
It'll, it'll be in the, uh, long term, it will be just in the two doors to the north. Of the four doors of the storage of the garages.
Okay, so, so half of the, the ground level, is that what you're saying? Half of the ground level, okay.
Yes.
And are there a lot of deliveries for the, the business for the?
Are there a lot of what? I'm sorry.
Uh, deliveries?
No, less than my neighbor gets from Amazon. Less than, what, less than one delivery a week.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I jump in?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Uh, and going back to that conversation about the potential, um, business use variance or plumbing business, uh, use variance. Uh, that would run with the land. Um, I, I don't believe that's being requested to be temporary or anything like that, so. Uh, I suppose, and, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, um. That it could be conditioned on only being within the building, um, or, or anything like that to constrain. The use, uh, but it would continue on.
That's true. Uh, I mean, I guess, I guess it could be conditioned as only for a plumbing business, even though. That kind of raises the question of, well, why couldn't it be, you know, a business that installs windows? So they say I just need to have some storage out there and then I take my things out to someone's house. So, um, I think that's a good point. Um, and it would, it would run with the land, uh. And there may be some conditions that could be imposed on that so that if. It became another use in time, somebody else bought the property and they want to take advantage of that. That there could be conditions on, um. The intensity of the use.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Please.
Okay, it is nine fifty-three now. At nine fifty-eight, we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
Okay.
John McDonough.
We need to get John on, John McDonough on.
Yeah.
And I think that's when we start, we should get his testimony before we keep on jotting.
So let's take this, will he put?
Oh, he's controlling everything, I was about to say.
Then we might get Flynn, I'd rather, since we have John tonight, I'd like to get John's.
Get him John, yeah, let's get him John, bring him back, right? Yeah.
We're not gonna get John.
We're not gonna get John tonight? Oh, ten thirty? All right, let's get John on then and see what he has to say.
I'll ask him, I think put John on the planner.
We'll stop sharing the screen here instead of getting him.
Well, see the neighbors that are there.
It's Steve.
Yes.
There's something on your computer that every time you get a message, it beeps.
Oh, I can't get rid of this thing.
You can't?
No, it's a, it's a Norton antivirus thing, renewing. That keeps coming up. I've been trying to get rid of it all day. I'm about to throw the darn thing out the window.
That's an idea.
Sorry about that.
Ah, that's okay.
Are we, are we ready to, uh? Yes, it's, uh. Do you think we could get the planner on to, maybe he can clarify some things or? Well, let's, let's get through this and then we can do that next. All right, it's nine fifty-eight. We're, Claudia, are we recording again?
Yes.
Okay, okay, where did we leave off?
You're, you were in the middle of some board discussion, but I think. Mr. Shatson's explaining that they still have one more witness, which is their planner, that. He may have some testimony that could be helpful in terms of the questions that are being raised.
Okay, board members, um, do you have any other questions of the current witnesses on Mr. Shatson? Or can we go on to the planner? All right, let's go on to the planner, Mr. Shatson. Mr. McDonough, you wanna be sworn in?
Yes, McDonald, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, you wanna give a brief, uh, benefit of your, uh, education and your professional, uh. Qualifications of a licensed planner?
Uh, sure thing. My name is John McDonough. I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current and it's in good standing. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. That's our national certification, current and in good standing. And I testify in this capacity throughout the state on a nightly basis, including, um, your town many times.
I'm familiar with your credentials and we'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. But you, uh, visited the property and you're familiar with the municipal land use law. And the land development awards of Princeton, and you prepare to pu- report and you're gonna testify now. As I understand, as to what your, uh, views are on the. Uh, this application as to the D variances, special reasons, particular suitability. A lack of the negative criteria, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, you wanna start off and give your report, please?
Sure thing. Um, it's been a, it's been a really good discussion, a good interactive process. I think. Um, I can boil it all down in about ten minutes here for your, you all, and then certainly go into cross. But, um, Mr. Chairman, I've put forth a couple of exhibits that I think may help, um, the board. See what's going on, on this property in addition to what it's already seen. And this is going to be a, um, I think it's a three or four-page exhibit.
Okay.
Mr. McDonough, so this would be exhibit A one? I don't think we've had any exhibits so far, so.
Okay, yeah, uh, uh, yes, counsel, I'll call to say one comprised of four sheets. And really, um, in my view, from a, from a pure physical planning standpoint. The applicant is doing two really good things here. Number one, cleaning up the plating of land. Um, as you can see from this first page here, uh, this little, well, we've outlined the subject property. Um, which consists of two lots in yellow. Um, you can see these little white lines which come from your GIS database. Showing all the lots that have been platted. So we're looking at two lots here, lot thirteen on your right. Lot fourteen on your left. I can zoom in if anybody needs me to, just, just say the word. Um, but again, you've got the little lot, lot number thirteen, and then you've got the big lot, lot number fourteen. In terms of cleaning up the plating of land, this little dash line that you see here is land that would be transferred from lot fourteen. Over to lot thirteen to make both lots fully conforming from a plating standpoint. Um, in terms of both your RA and your RB zone districts, which this property happens to straddle both districts. So you have a, a split line condition. Um, so this little lot line adjustment that you see here, taking this demising line. And essentially moving it back, um, will clean up the plating of land and make both lots fully conforming in, in that regard. I think that's a, a fairly, um, obvious. I think that's a, a fairly um, obvious good thing from a planning standpoint. We've got some case law in the Pizzomanton case, which essentially says the essence of good planning. Is rooted in your zoning ordinance, when an application fully complies, it should be approved. Um, so I think that's pretty clear cut, again, from a pure plating standpoint. The second thing the applicant is looking to do that I think is a good thing from a planning standpoint, and this became crystal clear when you heard. All the things uh, Mr. Bridger had to talk about in the opening there. This lot, which you see on the second sheet, uh, or this property, I'll say, which you see on the second sheet of A one. Is a compound. The compound is going away, there's a multiplicity of buildings happening here, and the, the intent, of course, is, is to simplify that, and we'll. We'll break down what that means as we look at the next slide. Where I put some labels on uh, the subject property, these are aerial views that were taken about a month ago. Um, by our drone, and we're gonna start with the land on the right, which would be lot number thirteen. You've got the existing dwelling, uh, number three forty-seven, which is going to essentially remain as is, it's a rental property. Will remain a rental property, um, and then in the back here, you have our applicant Gene. Who um, is looking to reside in the upper level of this garage and also maintain his. Um, longstanding plumbing business that's been part of the property. This is, this, what's happening back here is really what's triggering the only relief the applicant is asking the board to move on. A D one variance to allow a second dwelling unit, if it were. Two hundred square feet smaller, or maybe if it were to be eight hundred square feet. And meet that requirement of the number of rooms that you all were talking about before. This would be a conforming accessory dwelling unit, it's not, so the applicant is asking the board to move on D one use relief. For that second dwelling unit on the property, um, and then secondly, to continue this longstanding. Non-residential condition on the property, again, with reasonable restrictions that can certainly be part of an, an interactive process. On the use of, of that land in the back, but that's the, I'll call it the D one. And the D two, the board may find that this is also a D one back here, because there's been no proof per se. Um, that use was there, um, other than, of course, the words of our, of our applicant's father, that he had the right to do that. So, that's the, the essence of the relief on what would be an otherwise conforming lot here. Um, in terms of lot number thirteen. Over here on lot number fourteen, I think the first thing you heard through David's testimony at the very beginning, this. Bow that you see in the driveway is going to be flattened out, so that when this subdivision line takes hold. This driveway is going to be fully on lot number fourteen to the left, so it'll fix that problem. Um, then this middle, single-family dwelling, as you've heard, is going to go away, that's going to be demolished, there were apparently permits. Or performance um, bonds in place to demolish that dwelling, and then there's sort of this interplay where. Um, as I understand that the applicant was at, either asking to keep three fifty-five as a single-family dwelling, that's the multifamily dwelling now. Or three sixty-nine, we don't know what the future. Land buyer will want, one may wanna keep that house in the front and have a big backyard, or maybe they feel the nicer houses in the back. And, yeah, they wanna keep that, um, or they may wanna work on raw land and take them all down. But at the end of the day, the stipulation is you're gonna get one single-family dwelling on lot number thirteen, lot number fourteen to the left. You're going to get the existing dwelling on lot number thirteen to the right, and then. Um, if the application is approved, this new second principal dwelling on the property in the rear. This is just sort of a reverse view of that, looking back at the roads, we've got three forty-seven, a pool and the garage. And then over here, you've got three sixty-nine, three seventy-one, and three fifty-five. I can come back to any one of these um, exhibits if the board would like, but I'll just sort of pop through the proofs here. Um, in terms of the justifications for the D one and the D two. Um, as I said, the justification for the subdivision approval, I think you simply look to the Pizzomanton case, it's fully conforming. Um, and in that, in, in my opinion, that constitutes good planning and should be approved. Um, in terms of the D one, the legal basis for relief is our. Medici case, and I believe the statutory criteria are met here. Number one, under site suitability, that the site is particularly suitable for the use, because. The physical space is already there, it's simply a refinishing uh, of space that's already there. And the degree of departure from the zone plan is really not substantial. Uh, we're talking about eight hundred square feet would be allowed as a dwelling unit by right as an ADU. Um, so we are asking for relief, but we always look at that degree of departure, and um, I don't see it as being a, a substantial departure here. Working with space that's, that's already there. Um, next part of the. Use variance test is the special reasons, and looking to see if the application advances purposes of land use law. At four, forty colon fifty-five D dash two, I see multiple advanced here, including purpose A. The use promotes the general welfare because it does provide new housing stock in the back. Um, purpose G, we look to provide for a variety of housing options. Not everyone can afford or wants to live in a single-family dwelling. Not everyone wants to live in an apartment building, so this sort of becomes that missing middle that we always talk about with housing. That goes towards the planning goal for a variety of land uses, according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens. I think the board can move on purpose M, which is our planning goal for efficient use of land. This is adaptive reuse of existing space. And then finally, purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. Retaining what's there and familiar in the local landscape and familiar in the public eye, I think is a good thing from a planning standpoint as well. Next part of the test looks under the negative criteria, first with respect to public impacts. I believe that use relief at the back portion of this site can be granted without substantial detriment to the public. Visually, the reuse of the space does not entail enlargement or expansion of what's there. And functionally, as I said, the use is no more intense than a use that could be permitted by right, uh, as an eight hundred square foot apartment. Finally, with respect to the negative criteria, we look at the impact on the zone plan. And I believe use relief can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan. As I've said several times now, the degree of departure from the zone plan is not substantial. It's only over by two hundred square feet, a parking space is ten by twenty, that's approximately two hundred square feet as well, so that gives you the. The spatial ask that the applicant is seeking. I heard the dialogue about the lower space as well and the steps, and I think that's a legitimate concern, and. I would also offer there that the board can impose reasonable restrictions on the use of that lower level as well. So, in that regard, I believe the statutory test for D one is met. With respect to D two, for the non-residential use, I believe the application satisfies the statutory criteria under the. Cole and the Berbridge cases, we know that the essence of the D two test is not as strict as the D one test. We really look at um, site betterment, um, not whether the use belongs in the first place. In terms of the benefits, all of those use benefits that I just gave you as a whole for the project would carry forth. As you heard, uh, Richard or counsel say at the outset, the nice thing about this application is it's a cleanup application, it's cleaning up. Um, a number of existing non-conforming conditions, not the least of which is a non-conforming lot. Um, and a non-conforming use with respect to the three dwelling use in a single-family zone. Um, validation of the use will recognize what has been there for seventy-three years, this is not a new use per se. And all of the above promote the same purposes of zoning that I just gave you, A, G, I, and M. In terms of potential impacts, it's so far setback from the road, you've got. Excellent buffering in place here that would separate any impact of this relatively low intensity use from the surrounding properties. Um, and again, the board can impose reasonable restrictions to ensure that that use does not relies. Uh, rise to the level of being substantially adverse. If the board to find that we need to prove the use in the, in the first instance here. I would say the enhanced proofs under D one of site suitability are met, based on the uh, physical condition of the property. It's longstanding um, associated history with the use, and the reconciliation of the master plan is met. Uh, because we are clearly talking about a distinct site here. With a distinct history that is clearly atypical of other lots in the zone. Uh, therefore, if you give this relief for this use here, I don't think it's tantamount to a rezone. Uh, that's the D one and the D two, um, to the extent needed, I think your planner said that we don't. Um, s- some of these buildings have existing non-conforming setbacks, I don't necessarily think we need to reprove them. Um, I think your, your planner agrees as well, but I do wanna point that out, that. Um, as part of this application, the applicant would seek to continue uh, non-conforming setbacks related to, I believe it was three forty-seven. Um, and maybe it's three sixty-nine on, on the other side here on the, on the side setback, so. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, um, Richard, I'll open up to any redirect from you at this point, I, I see the hour and I'll, I'll take this off the screen, but. I believe it's, it's been a good back and forth, there's a lot to this application, but there's also a lot of simplicity to the application. Um, and with that, I'll pause, I'll say I believe the criteria are met and approval is warranted.
Mr. McDonough, just, just for clarification, you referenced the, the need for D two variants. Could you just uh, again clarify? What aspect of the project is the applicant seeking a D two for?
Sure, and sorry about the uh, the rapid fire testimony.
That's okay.
Um, so, yeah, I, just to go back to the screen here, um, in my view. The D one is for the, for the residential use, the D two would be for the non-conforming, non-validated, should I say? Commercial use of the property, it's, this is sort of a, a validation of, of that. Um, I heard some talk about the back and forth about keeping two houses on the property. Until sometime, I don't know if that was ultimately resolved. Um, I guess that would be some sort of a temporary D one variance as well to allow two single-family dwellings on a. On a one-family lot.
But Mr. McDonough, so I mean, a D two would be expansion or intensification of a non-conforming use. What do you think is being expanded here that's non-conforming?
It's, it's a, it's a good point, counsel, and um. Sometimes as I read that Cox book, he talks about alteration of a non-conforming use as not necessarily an expansion per se. I would agree with you, this is not an expansion, and that could be the justification, um, but clearly there is an. An alteration of what's going on based on the change in the lot area and the change of some of the other physical characteristics of the property, so. I'll leave that to the board, I put down in my notes, D two relief if required, so.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you.
Yep. Take this off.
Okay, um, board members, any questions of Mr. McDonough?
I think. Unless Derek wants to, I, I thought I read regarding the D two and Derek's memo. That the intensification and the need, the need for the D two. Is because part of one of the lots is losing. You know, is giving away square footage, which makes the existing non-conforming. Uh, um, it's an intensification of it, and that requires a D two. I read that some.
I think yes, but in Derek's memo, he called that out, because he said. Lot fourteen as currently exists has a three-unit multifamily and two single-family dwellings. So, they're already non-conforming, and when you reduce the size of lot fourteen, you intensify that non-conformity. But here, the applicant has represented. Uh, there'll only be one single-family home on that lot, the other two.
So it's a temporary D two, Mr. Floyd, because uh, until the subdivision takes place. Uh, and the two lots, the two houses go down and one house stands there. Uh, it's an intensification of a non-conformity, and there's a case called uh.
Raspberry.
Kingwood Township, it's called uh.
Raspberry.
The Kingwood Township case by Judge King in the appellate division, so that's a uh. That, that intenses the non-conformity, and it's raspberries incorporated versus Kingwood Township, it's the case. And Mr. Uh, the, and the Mr. Bridger's talking about. Am I right, Mr. Bridger?
I believe so, um. I thought Mr. McDonough was talking about the increase of the business activity with the trailers as of other D two. Maybe I'm mistaken, but.
Yeah, I mean you.
I thought so too.
There's two, Mr. Floyd's right and you're right, I mean, and Mr. McDonough is right, but Mr. Floyd's right too, because. Temporarily, until the subdivision is improved, uh, and the towns are down. An intensification of a non-conformity under uh, raspberries versus Kingwood Township, appellate division case by Judge King.
And what, what was discussed earlier was that the business use was, the request was for a D one variance.
Right.
For that, rather than proving out the non-conforming.
Well, you have to come to the conclusion, the board has to come to the conclusion, uh, that. It was a possibility of a uh. Approval back in nineteen fifty-three, or if they find that the. The uh, the criteria of the D, of the, of D one variance, and you wanted, maybe Mr. McDonough will talk about that. Is met, then you can grant D one variance, but it, there is some semblance of approval. And unfortunately, the person who got it is no longer with us, but, you know, in those days. Although Mr. Bridger might not think that uh, in nineteen fifty-three, uh, that would be a. He wouldn't grant a uh, uh, home occupation, maybe the zoning officer at that time, they had one in Princeton. Um, thought it was, I mean. I mean, you, you can come to that conclusion, it's been done, it's been used for business for seventy-three years. Without a complaint, and. You know, that, that, that's something to come to a, you can come to a conclusion to, but. But Mr. McDonough, you, what, did you, did you really cover anything about the D one, if, if in fact the business is a. A, a, a D one variance?
I did, I'll, and I'll do it a little, a little more slowly, I'll hit, I'll hit all the. All the Ds, and I'm sorry I keep throwing this up there on, on the screen, but.
Hey, one, uh, Mr. McDonough, can we just get a copy of this one year tomorrow, uh, this exhibit, we'll call it?
Yes, and I don't know, Richard, if you wanted to go through you, or if you want me to just send it directly, and I, I can do that too.
You could send it to Mr. Bridger at the municipal building, okay?
All right, so.
To market A one, that's uh, May twenty-eighth.
Okay, so, it sounds to me like you could have two D ones side by side here, the, again, the apartment. The second dwelling unit, rather, and then this business use in the back, and I tried to give you some enhanced proofs as to site suitability. Um, and the reconciliation of the omission of the use, um, related to this. Uh, as well, so in my opinion, I gave you the proofs for the D one variance. For the business use and the D one variance for the, the garage use, for the, for the residential use. And I would agree, um, there's a D two variance to shrink the land area that's associated with multiple buildings on. On one lot, on this lot, lot fourteen to the left, sounds to me, Richard, like it's a temporary.
It is.
New variance, but a variance nonetheless, I think, Derek, I think that's what you were talking about in your letter.
Yes, sir.
So, three Ds. Does, does that answer the question?
Does that clarify it?
Clarify it, yeah.
Yeah, well, it was, it was originally Karen's question.
Yes, no, I understand, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Mr. Shatson, where do we go from here?
That's all I have, um. It's up to you to decide what you're gonna do with this application.
I, I have one question, sorry, Richard, could you just expand a little bit upon the uh, performance bonds that you discussed earlier? How would that work?
I'm sorry, what, Eric?
I'm sorry, uh, you had mentioned performance bonds a little earlier, could you expand? Could you expand on that and how that would work?
One, but if you want a performance bond to demolish any building that's going to be demolished, when we find out and then within, you know, maybe a month, we'll post a performance bond. That's all you want, you want, that's the only thing that I could think of. Unless you have something that's to guarantee that if it's going to be demolished, it's going to be demolished. We want to make sure that there's only going to be one single-family dwelling on the Lot 14 to be known as Lot 14.01. That's what we want to, that's what we want to do. And it started off, as Mr. Schmidt testified to, as a simple lot line change, minor subdivision to get the two lots conforming. But you brought out things that we had to contend with. And we're trying to, we are trying to, to, to take care of everything so that, you know, it becomes almost nine, totally conforming except for the fact of the ADU on Lot 13. We're just trying to do that and make the lots conforming. And when you brought up the fact that 355 is a three-unit dwelling, when it's not permitted in the RARV zones, we deal with it by either knocking it down and, or making it a single-family dwelling. And as far as 371 is concerned, the applicant testified it was fogged. He didn't, you know, he didn't know, he got extensions, he got sick. He probably forgot about it, so we're going to take care of that. And that's also, that's definitely going to be a performance bond. So, you know, we're doing our best we can to get the things put together. So you have two conforming lots and two, and a single, at least one single-family dwelling on each of the lots. But the testimony of the applicant is, he can't, he doesn't need the large lot there. He's going to rent it out and he's going to have rental income, provide rental space for future people in Princeton. And he's going to run the small business that he has from, if you grant relief for the conversion of the second floor of the garage to 1,000 square feet. And as Mr. McDonough pointed out, you're talking about a slight increase of the 800 to 1,000 of living. And as you pointed out, to ask, to answer Ms. Deanna's question, there's three rooms there and that complies, except that it's got to be a little bit bigger. As far as the rest of the space is concerned, as far as would you raise as a concern, he says he's going to use it as a, he can use, he's using it as utilities. Now, you can also put a restriction, a recorded restriction, that somebody does a title search in the Mercer County Clerk's office to say that that garage conversion can only have 1,000 square feet, period. You don't have to do that under a case called Aldrich versus Schwartz by Judge Cone. He says that a person buying Lot 13, if there was going to be a buy, must go to the zoning officer and find out what the conditions or restrictions were. That was a setback line on a shore hall. But, and the argument in that case was, in the Aldrich case was, you know, not everybody can go, not everybody knows that. And the argument was that it should be recorded in the Mercer County Clerk's office. So it's constructive notice of the restriction of the garage. So you can turn around and put all the restrictions you want on to be, to safeguard what could be done with that garage conversion. And you, the, I could draw a document and Ms. Casey can review it and it gets recorded in the clerk's office. So it's constructive notice of all the restrictions on that garage. That's how you solve it as well. And again, you don't even have to do that under Aldrich versus Schwartz, but that is a very dangerous, in my opinion, even though it's an appellate division case by, you know, a very intelligent judge, Judge Cone from Melissa County. But, you know, not everybody's going to go to a zoning officer and check it out. And the argument also was, in that case, what happens if, you know, 20 years from now, the zoning officer doesn't have the file? So you record it in the county clerk's office and that goes on forever when you do a title search. So that's another safeguard you can put on for the house. And also, you can do it also, if you want, for the business there. You record it and somebody's buying it, we get a search and they'll see that, you know, there's certain restrictions on, A, the business and B, the garage conversion. That's how you solve, and then that's how you solve some of the concerns that Mr. Bridger has, and rightly so, on, you know, expansion of the business and the expansion of the house or the apartment on top of the garage. You want to comment on that, Ms. Casey?
No, I understand your comment with respect to the restriction on the garage conversion. In terms of how to limit the business use, I think that would take a little bit of discussion. I'd certainly want to confer with Mr. Lesko and Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weissman on that. So that's certainly, that's certainly one way that the board could proceed. I'm not sure tonight that we could come up with all those restrictions, but that's certainly possible.
Karen, if I might add, the board may also want to entertain having a restriction like that towards the second principal dwelling variance for the garage apartment unit. We've heard a few times tonight that be, that was framed kind of as a supersized ADU. But as we've seen, it's not, it's, you know, it's being treated as a second dwelling unit. And we also don't even really know the size. So I wouldn't want to restrict it to something like 1,000 square feet. And then we find out later that that's actually not enough for what the applicant is looking to do. So I think we should craft something to, to allow the applicant to do with what they're looking to do and create something that the board's comfortable with without allowing for any future, you know, whether it's 10 years or 50 years down the line of someone building a completely second house. Because as we all know, tonight, that wasn't the intention. But I think Mr. Schatzman's, his example of putting that in the deed wouldn't make sense. We just got to figure out what exactly it is. And I might start with really restricting those uses to the existing garage building. If that was something that we can, I know I often make your life difficult, Karen, with some of these suggestions. But if that's something that we can begin with, that might prevent any future.
I draw it up and I think Ms. Casey, from previous experience dealing with, let's say, in Montgomery, I do a pretty good drawing of documents. And, you know, she will review it, of course. But, you know, I could draw a pretty good document and allay the fears of the board and I'll take her suggestions. But, you know, I'm pretty detailed when it comes to doing documents.
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Schatzman, that raises the question for the board. Does the board want to be able to participate in that? Is it, I appreciate your willingness to draw it up, but that would mean then that your client was looking for an approval tonight? And that, we'll just call it list of restrictions, is something that you would provide post-approval for review by staff? So I don't know which way the board is going to go with the application, but.
It's whatever you want.
I understand. So I think for the board, so. So it's 10:30 now. Does the board want to continue with their discussion? Do you want to carry this to another meeting date? How would you like to proceed at this point?
We want to proceed, we want to keep going right now.
We also, we also have the public to hear from.
That's right.
If there is any.
How much more, Mr. Schatzman, how much more testimony?
He's done.
He's done, okay. So we could, we could open it up to the public now. That over with and then see, you know, we do have an 11 o'clock shutdown unless we extend it.
Well, you have until, I gave an extension to Mr. Bridger, Bridger, June 30. Then you're, I think your meeting will be on June 28, so you have time, if you want more time.
Actually, our meeting's on June 24.
Yeah, the meeting date's being changed.
Okay, let's go to the public and keep moving, let's see where we are.
Is that all right? Okay, let's, all right, I hate to ask this. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Schatzman, before we open it up to the public?
No, I just want to repeat that this is a cleanup. And I think that McDonald's testimony is such that, you know, again, I think it's a continuation of a nonconforming use, but he gave you reasons for, you don't find it that way. It's been so long ago, you know, 73 years, that means something to my mind if I were on the zoning board. That's been continued on. And again, the 1938 ordinance provided for home occupation. The 1955 continued it with a special permit. And unfortunately, it didn't, it was repealed or not included in the later ordinances. But, you know, that's, it's a cleanup. And I think you got to think that there's a lot, although it's not a C2 variance, the benefits outweigh any detriments. I mean, we're cleaning something up in accordance with your ordinance, especially getting rid of the nonconformity of the multiple dwellings on the Lot 14. And we're just asking basically to continue on the business in a lesser intent that was done in 1953. And if you grant, and a variance for the conversion of the ADU with, and if you have the proper conditions and they're recorded, I think the municipality of Princeton is protected. That's my, that's my view on this case.
Okay. All right. We're going to open the meeting up to the public now. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, indicate that by pressing the raise hands button at the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anybody indicated previously or now that they'd like to speak?
I have three people, there's one hand right on the top there.
Okay, well, pick somebody and let's begin.
We can't see you, Mr.
Oh, good evening.
Wait, who's speaking, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Barr, okay. Mr. Barr, if you're comfortable, could you give us your address?
Sure, my name is Christopher Barr and I live at 211 Ridgeview Road.
All right, sir, and do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm speaking as the executive director of Ridgeview Conservancy. We're a small land trust that's based on Ridgeview Road. And our primary mission is to promote conservation of vulnerable forests and wetlands in and around Princeton. And we do a lot of conservation work along the Princeton Ridge. The discussion tonight is really focused very heavily on the challenges related to the portion of the two lots that's closest to Ridgeview Road. And I also want to point out, though, that one of the most extraordinary features of these properties is actually the northernmost, the northern half of the lots, which thanks very much to the Keller family, remains heavily wooded with mature trees. It slopes northward down into the wetlands of the Ridgeview Woods. We could see this in Mr. McDonough's presentation very clearly. And this area, this wooded area on these lots is actually really important both environmentally and historically. Environmentally, the New Jersey Conservation Blueprint has designated this entire area as being medium-high to highest priority ecosystem to protect. There's a spring located in the northeast corner of the lot. It has very high water quality, habitat for rare species. It's high in terms of climate resilience and it's a priority in terms of habitat connectivity. It's part of the Ridgeview Woods. There's about 100 acres of contiguous woodlands and wetlands that stretches through there. The Keller property is also historically significant. Most people in Princeton don't know that Upton Sinclair, the writer and labor activist, lived in these woods on one of the adjacent properties when he wrote his first novel in the early 1900s, Manassas. And then when he started working on his, on his very famous book, The Jungle. And his link to the Keller property and the spring that I mentioned is documented historically. It's also documented that the late woodland Indians between 600 and 800 years ago lived in a Long Cherry Run stream, which is right there, adjacent to the property. And so they were surely on these parcels. For the last several years, Ridgeview Conservancy and our conservation partners have been working to conserve several contiguous parcels that are adjacent and nearby the Keller property as part of Princeton's Emerald Necklace Initiative. We've conserved 15 acres immediately to the west between the applicant's property and the intersection of the Great Road and Cherry Valley Road. And we've conserved these to preserve the historic sites, to conserve the ecological functions and to create public walking trails. There's also a 10-acre parcel that was donated by the Blumenthal family just to the east of this property. And all of this has been done with funding from Princeton, from Mercer County and from private donations. And so it's really quite extraordinary. And in recent weeks, we've been in preliminary discussions with Mr. Keller about potentially purchasing a portion of that northern part of his lot, which would be supplementary land for any development that might occur there so that we could put it under conservation easement. And given the tremendous public benefits involved, we'd like to encourage the zoning board to consider incorporating this attention to the historic and environmental values of the property into your review for the application. And if permits are ultimately granted, one possibility would be to include the creation of these conservation easements for public benefit as one of the conditions in the application. Thank you.
Yeah, we would agree to that, but there has to be, there has to be, if you're going to pay, you have to pay for more fair market value. Because we'd be glad to sit down to talk with whoever your representatives are. Because of a case called Nizzato versus Edgewater and Marlboro Township versus Humdale Township, there has to be a rational nexus between what we're asking for and what the board can impose. So as long as you're willing to pay fair market value, you know, as long as it's within reasonable, we'll sit down to talk with you. But if you're looking for a free donation, if they grant approval. If they grant approval, it may have to be voided under the Nuthy Otto case or the Marlboro case.
Maybe just a quick response to that. Absolutely. We would pay fair market value. We've.
Well, then, sure, we'll talk with you.
We we.
Talk with you. And if it's an easement, you you when you when you value an easement on a combination, it's less than a fee. So if you're looking for an easement, it's going to be less amount of money than if we. Donated it as a D as a fee to you.
Sure, sure. We we.
Not going to be, it's not going to be the, you know, as if you took the property at a fee simple absolute would be an easement, which is less money than. And your appraiser, when you come up with appraisal, will come will will conclude this. And I agree with that. The easement will be less than. A fee taking, but we certainly sit down and talk with you.
Terrific. And we would be pleased to pay fair market value. Thank you.
Okay, um Claudia, can you call the next person?
Mr. Braden Cormack, you want to speak?
Yes, hi. Hello.
If you're comfortable, give us your address, please.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you. Thank you um to the chair and to the board for. Um, hearing me. Um, I'm not speaking for or against the application, but I do have concerns.
Mr. Cormack, just if you are comfortable giving us your address or just to let us know what town you live in.
Oh, and I need also to um, I think I need also to swear in.
You do.
Three two six Ridgeview Road.
All right, sir. And do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for that. So I have some concerns, even though I'm not speaking for or against the application. Um, I think it's appropriate to help Gene stay in his property. And I know that um the board is eager to do that as his neighbors also are. I think it's also appropriate for our neighbor. Um, to sort things out at this moment when he's asking, when the family is asking for rezoning. To sort out issues that um of noncompliance that are very, very longstanding. Um, these relate in different ways. I've learned a lot from the conversation, from the very long conversation this evening. But I spent a long time with the documents as well. Um, I have concerns relating both to thirteen and chiefly to fourteen, but I'll start with thirteen. I have no um primary concern about um a thousand square feet as opposed to eight hundred. It is worth, it is worth, it 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 might be something for the board to consider whether intensifying noncompliance, as has been raised. Um, makes sense when what's being asked for is uh uh the addition of a second principal residence. With the ongoing business use of the property. And the only thing I would say there is um when I believe um Ms. Ms. Um. When one of the board members raised the question of uh restrict of. Uh, whether or not a variance to allow for ongoing business use would be carried with the property. That seems to me something absolutely to avoid, to formalize in any way to formalize. Um, business use that could carry with the property after it is sold. That would be a big mistake. In relation to that, so I think I'm going to move to fourteen, which really is my biggest concern. I am not, first of all, I want to say that when I um uh I became concerned chiefly because of one. Item, item three, I think, in the letter sent from um Mr. Schatzman to neighbors notifying them of this hearing. Um, the paragraph, I'm not going to read it out, but I do ask the board to read it on their own time. Um, that is item number three. It is concerns which buildings will stay and which will go. And it is, um, it it does not make sense. It is extremely unclear. There is no way of reading it where you would know what the plan was. I realize that a lot of time has been spent insisting this evening. That one property will remain on fourteen and that this has everything to do with why this is a good idea, to clean up the property, to. Regularize the number of dwellings. But in fact, in the written documents formally. There is actually a great deal of confusion and a great deal of un lack of clarity on this precise issue. And I am not reassured by the oral testimony of Mr. Schatzman and the applicant about. Um, about about that as the ultimate as the ultimate thing that we can expect. I will quote one sentence from this evening's. Proceedings, when asked whether three, six, nine, which is the red house closest to the road, would be taken down. And whether a bond could be imagined for that. The reply was not. Um, we will provide a bond when we take down three, six, nine or three, five, five. But if we take down three, five, five, we will then put up a bond. That does not seem to me like a statement that that one or both of the that one of those buildings is coming down. The reason that concerns me, and I think I'm moving towards my end. I know that we're we're running late and I think. Um, I think I'm, I think my primary objection is clear enough. Um, the thing we have not talked about is in the narrative of the proposal. Um, there is a statement set that we have not talked about at all, the proposal to build a new house. With frontage on Ridgeview Road. Now. I recognize that one way of reading our proceedings this evening would be to say, well, if a new house is built, then both. Three, five, five and three, six, nine, as well as the noncontroversial cottage, which is three seventy one. All three will be taken down and the one would remain. But that actually is not clear from the documents. And I want to say, although I do not um question in any way the goodwill of the Kellers. Or of the applicant and the and the applicant's representatives. Um, I have no confidence that should the property transfer to another owner. With two properties, two dwellings on the property. That we would not be facing an application to allow a continuation of two properties on the on that on that thing. On the on that property. So in fact. In terms of in terms of zoning decision, I oppose not just. Uh, you know, I I I don't know legally whether whether transfer of fee. Can be restricted such that someone could not build two houses on a property. One thing I do oppose absolutely is any variance. Allowing transfer of lot fourteen or fourteen point oh one, as it would then be known. Prior to the removal of um at least two of the three dwellings. I think that 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 given the given the um projection. That what is being looked but that what we are to expect is one house on the lot. Um, the property cannot transfer to a new owner, a developer with two properties on two two properties on it. That seems to me a mistake and it's it seems to me it would be a mistake. And it seems to me it would also set up a dangerous precedent and a false expectation. On the part of the new owner of what could be done with the property. So as you as you as you consider the application, and as I say, I'm not opposed. I'm not speaking for or against it. I urge you to ask for greater clarity about that and not just expressions of goodwill. About um a about um about our. Expectation that one that we would only be looking at one house on one of on on fourteen. Thank you. I hope I haven't taken too much time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Claudia, the next person?
Claudia, you muted? Claudia?
Mrs. Hesley? Shandly? I don't know what.
Yes, Shanley.
Shanley.
Mr. Shanley, could we have your full name for the record, please?
Sure. Patricia Shanley, two eleven Ridgeview Road.
And you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to speak on the property as well, um as Mr. Barr did. So I'm a forest ecologist. My focus is on forest and human health. And first, I just want to say I'm really grateful to have neighbors like the Kellers. Um, uh, I think Princeton's fortunate to have a family with such deep roots. I am supportive of the Keller's business continuing while he is owner. And I think it makes good sense for him to live in an apartment of sufficient square feet above his garage. And I think, thank goodness, Mr. Keller is a plumber and can help those of us without such capabilities address our needs here in Princeton. So regarding the Keller's property, they've had the wisdom not to degrade the back wetlands. And they've haven't removed vegetation. They've allowed it to remain wild and natural. This is critical. As their land includes a really fascinating wetland and spring with remarkable literary history. I'm just going to touch upon this briefly because while we know that Upton Sinclair lived there, we heard that from Mr. Barr. There was a young girl named Carrie Stout. She was ten and she happened to have, she wrote about her interactions with him. And she actually described the spring on the Keller's property and all the large boulders and the species that grew there, wildflower species. This is a rare gem of an opportunity for ecological and cultural restoration of a significant site. We don't usually have something like that. So um next door, Princeton High School students on the property next door have worked for four years, scores of them. To uncover African American and indigenous history that is next to the Kellers. And when their eyes pop, when they hear that they're working next to the spring that Upton Sinclair, where he uh got his water. Because all of them have to read The Jungle as sophomores in high school. So I think what happens with this property reflects the vision and values of Princeton. For one, are we going to support working class families to remain in Princeton? And also with a simple easement, we have an opportunity to intertwine human stories and natural history. To serve as a gem of an educational resource. So our hope. As Mr. Barr mentioned, is that we can work with the Keller family to place an easement on the property. We always pay fair market value and sometimes above and restore it to promote human health and celebrate literary history. Thank you, uh, all of you for still being here, and I thank the Kellers and the zoning board.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Claudia. Next speaker, please.
I got W F T. I'm not sure what the name is.
Yes, good evening and thank you uh for the late time still, but fascinating conversation. My name is Wolfgang Danzberg Gruber. And I'm the with my wife, Annegret Danzberg Gruber. We are the immediate. Uh, neighbors to the east. Uh, of the Keller um property and we are from lot twelve. Um, and I can.
We're just going to swear you in.
Follow Miss Stanley and say that uh we are extremely happy to have the Kellers as our neighbors.
Sir, sir, we're just gonna, sir.
We're also very happy that to continue move.
Can you hear?
Okay, someone has disappeared.
Sir? One second.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we need to swear you in. Do you swear? We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, do you do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening?
Uh, is my name and we live in um three twenty five Ridgeview Road. Um, and we are to the immediate um east of the um uh property of the Kellers. And uh, as I just said before, I'm um, um, we are delighted to have them as our neighbors. Uh.
Pause one second, please, so we can swear you in.
Sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
No, now you're unmuted.
Again.
Okay, sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening?
You hear me again?
Yeah, it's fine. Thank, thank you. Okay, please continue.
So um, so time, uh, we are the neighbors uh to the um east. Uh, my name is Wolfgang Danzberg Gruber. And um, we are in lot twelve, um, at three twenty five Ridgeview Road. And um, I would only like to raise one concern. While we are extremely happy to have the Kellers as our neighbors and um. I'm also very happy that personally that he continues his home occupation. Uh, as you called it, um, and um, is in plumbing. I think it is important that one considers perhaps. Environmental impacts, possible environmental impacts by the storage facilities. Uh, any one of us who has been in plumbing, and I've done this for device. Knows that you deal with all kinds of liquids and greases and oils. Um, and old plumbing material. Um, and petroleum and others. And that might sit down. Um, and since we are on the highest elevation of the Princeton Ridge. Um, water has a tendency um to to follow down. And since I'm working in global food and water security. Um, and the impact of environmental and combat issues on uh water purity. I'm concerned about that and I know he's taking care of everything, but since we talk. It was beautifully mentioned by um Mr. McDonough before that this is basically a cleanup. Cleanup job of the property. I thought that should be part of the consideration to make this possible. Uh, to be continued uh and to be continued for the pleasure of all. Thank you and good night and sorry for the technological glitches.
All right, one thing, it's just about eleven o'clock. Um, do we do we want to? Board members, do you want to continue on? It looks like we only have one more speaker, but I'm not sure. Uh, or do you want to just carry this till, I believe, June twenty fourth?
No, sorry. We we were going to have to have a special date. I have a case on June twenty fourth, which I will not get an extension from.
Okay.
And it's going to be a long one, unfortunately, so.
Okay.
Perhaps we could at least finish the public portion?
I think that's a good idea.
Great idea.
Okay, all right, good. So let's uh Claudia, can you call the next person, please?
There, I don't know what your name is. Bronstein?
Yes, hi, I'm using my wife's computer. My name is Peter Bronstein. And we live at fifty Baldwin Lane. Baldwin Lane runs perpendicular, I guess, parallel to the side of of the Keller's property.
And Mr. Mr. Bronstein, um, uh, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So um. We have a private road. There are four houses on it. And um, we've border the, I guess it's fourteen that the Kellers have. Um, I spoke with Gene um about a month ago about his plans and. Based on my conversation with him, I was a little surprised at the tone of the conversation this evening. Because I thought we were going to be discussing the possibility that Gene mentioned to me, which was that. He was seeking potentially to split lot fourteen into two lots in addition to. Moving some of lot fourteen into lot thirteen to make lot thirteen large enough to be a standalone lot. He had mentioned to me, though, that um they're considering splitting the remainder of fourteen into two properties. But in order to do that, they would need permission to tie into Baldwin Lane, which is a private road. And I'm quite concerned about that. And having lived here for thirty years, I don't think there'd be much. The the view here would not be very favorable to um giving access to. The neighboring property on on our private road. So I thought that was going to be the subject of this evening's discussion, at least to some extent. And I think instead, the confusion that we have over whether they're planning to remove the Little Red House. Or the Brown House and back. Um, just reflects the uncertainty over what exactly they're planning to do with the property. And I would emphasize what Braden said earlier, which is that in order to properly review what. Uh, the Kellers are asking for here, I think we need to know what their plans are. And the plans are very ambiguous at best as to what's going to happen with the properties that are on lot fourteen now. And the plans are very ambiguous at best as to what's going to happen with the properties that are on lot fourteen now. So I would say that I think it would be only appropriate for the Kellers to come back. And tell us what the plan is for that lot going forward. So that we're all in a better position to understand what the impact of this is going to be on the neighborhood.
I mean, do you have anything else to add right now? Mr. Bronstein?
Uh, no, that's that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. And I'm sure the Kellers have heard you. So, okay, Claudia, is there anyone else that like would like to speak?
There are no more hands.
Okay, okay, since no one else wants to speak, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. All right, do we want to continue on or do we want to stop for the evening? Stop for the evening. Okay.
I agree. Stop for the evening. Um, one of the reasons has always been to let staff go home.
At a reasonable, I'm very, that's, I agree. Very well said, Michael.
Yes.
Um. What, what would be the date we would carry this to, Derek?
Thank you. Um, unfortunately, we'd we'd have to have a special meeting. We could uh, and I don't know if other staff is available uh for consideration, June eleventh. Or eighteenth, those are Wednesdays.
I can do. I think I can do e- I can do either of those. I would prefer the eleventh, but. What are board members? What are your schedules? Do both of those dates work? Do one of them work?
It'd be okay.
Neither, neither works for me.
Neither works, okay. Um, other board members, Stephen, you're muted? Okay.
What was it? The eleventh and what was the other day?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Okay, yeah, I'm working.
I I'm available on both, Chris.
Yeah, I'm available both.
So am I.
Okay.
I'm available on the eighteenth.
Okay.
I think.
Marlon?
Yeah, both are good.
Both are good. Okay, um. I'm kind of iffy for the eighteenth, but available on the eleventh. But whichever date you choose.
The other option, I'll throw it out there is June ninth or June, I mean, excuse me, July ninth or July eleventh.
July ninth. I'm good, I'm good for both of those. July eleventh.
That's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
That's not good.
I, and I'm afraid I can't, well, wait a minute, it would be an evening meeting. Uh, it's gonna be difficult for me, but um.
Would the sixteenth work? July sixteen?
That works for me.
That works for me as well. Oh, yes. Yeah, it it should work for me.
Yeah.
Sixteenth works for me.
Sixteenth also works for me.
Yeah, looks so good.
I can do July sixteen.
Okay, Michael, does that work for you?
Yes. Mr. Dopkin, does that work?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, if we have enough members, so it's up to Mr. Dopkin if he can be there or not, but. Everybody else seems to be acceptable to it, July sixteenth.
Hold on, let me just see. So how many members we would have?
We have seven. We would have six if Mr. Dopkin can't make it.
Okay, and the applicant is going to need.
Five votes.
At least, yes, at least five affirmative votes, so.
Mr. Schatzman says, he called earlier today. And we, if we don't have seven members, he does not want to go on.
Okay, well.
We do have two other members of the board that aren't here tonight.
That's true. They'd have to listen to tonight's tape though to participate. Which I'm sure they'd be willing to do if if they can make this special meeting.
Well, we don't have, we don't have.
No, I know. We don't have a date yet.
No, we don't have either of them here, so we really can't.
It's. Wait a minute, Derek, what about July twenty third? That's a regular meeting.
Uh, we have another case that times out August fifth, a major site plan that we'd have to hear that night, unfortunately. Or I would have offered that up, but that's a good suggestion.
Got it.
Well, Mr. Schatzman, what do you think about the sixteenth? We have two members here that, two members that are not here tonight that may be at the meeting. You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted. Rich, you're muted? All right.
Max?
All right, now you're okay. Richard?
I need, I need, I'll give you extension when you have seven people here. If the two people were not here, if they say that they're listening to the tapes. I'll go along with it, but uh I have to have seven members. I'll give you one extension you want.
Richard, um. You want to just carry to the sixteenth right now with six members? I will contact the two board members to see if they are amenable to listening to the tape and can make.
Yeah, we can do that.
If not, then it'll be canceled. You'll have to notice again. We'll have to look at an extension and pull board for date.
No, if if it happens on the sixteenth and I appear on the sixteenth. Uh, you could carry it from the sixteenth to.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Thank you, sir. Let's do that.
In other words.
Right, so for the benefit.
Instead in Hillsborough for a big job, we carried it to this.
Oh, you got, you're perfect.
You got it, you got it. All right, so for the, for the benefit of those members of the public who came tonight to speak. Uh, it's being carried then to July sixteenth. There will not be any additional noticing. Um, because you're hearing about it tonight. And I assume we would have the normal meeting time of seven thirty, Derek?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
But the extension.
Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Richard, do we need an extension, Claudia? Thank you.
Yeah. An oral extension, send me it, send me the email tomorrow, I'll sign it. I'll give you oral extension now. I don't go for the business about, you know, you didn't act within the time. I'm giving you an oral extension. It's on the record. Claudia sends me an email, I'll sign it tomorrow, I'll send it right back to you, all right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sign it, why don't you sign it till uh, Claudia wanted to make it beyond the the July, make it like to September. You know, they give you, give you a lot of time, all right?
Thank you.
Carry it, all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, special meeting is July sixteenth. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, any other discussion this evening?
You have two special meetings, the twenty four and the sixteen, July sixteen, and then July twenty third.
Well, the twenty fourth is a replacement to the twenty fifth.
But it's a special meeting.
Yep, oh, wait, wait. We have, um, just so I get this straight, we have our meeting, we have a a meeting on Jul- on June twenty fourth.
Yes.
Then we have a meeting on July twenty third, right? That's a normal meeting.
Right.
And then we'll have a meeting on July sixteenth.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Right.
Okay, if that's it for the evening, any other thing we want to discuss before we adjourn? Okay, thank you very, thank you very much and we'll see you next month.
See you.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.